Are we ready?
Mm-hmm.
All right, good evening and welcome. I am Patty McQuine. I would like to welcome you to our regularly scheduled board meeting on Tuesday, December seventh. Welcome everybody that is here and anybody that is watching it at a later time. And we will have our board members introduce themselves. We'll be starting on my left with Mr. Wilson.
Good evening, Sean Wilson.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Doug Brooks. Thanks for coming out tonight.
Good evening, Anupam Chigsedu.
Good evening, Patrick Keough. Thanks for joining us this evening.
Hello, good evening, Lauren Christensen.
And Superintendent Merritt, would you like to introduce yourself and your staff, please?
Good evening and welcome. I'd like to begin by introducing my assistant, Elizabeth Adams, and thank her for being here this evening to take our minutes. I would like to ask the remaining members of the staff to introduce themselves to you, beginning with Mr. Brandon.
And good evening, everyone. Nick Brandon, Executive Director, Communications and Marketing, welcome.
Good evening, Curtis Woods, Executive Director, Student Services.
Hi, I'm W. P. Oz. I'm the Chief Finance and Operations Officer, welcome.
Good evening, Beth Rail, Chief Academic Officer, welcome.
Good evening, Liz Vartanian Gibbs, Human Resources.
All right, thank you so much, and we will stand and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you so much. We are now on to letter A, adoption of agenda, approval of consent agenda. Action item twenty-two, twelve, twenty-five. I am looking for a motion.
Madam President, I move that we adopt the agenda, approve the consent agenda, action item number twenty-two dash one twelve, I'm sorry, twenty-two dash twelve dash twenty-five.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Members Sedu and seconded by Member Brooks, that we adopt the agenda and approve the consent agenda. Will you take us through the agenda, please?
Yes, President McQuine. This evening, our consent agenda consists of human resources transactions since our last time together. We have a new hire for your consideration, as well as leaves and resignations and tenure recommendations. We also have the approval of minutes from our special meeting on November the twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one, and our regular meetings from November twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one. Finally, we have consideration of the tentative agreement with the International Union of Operating Engineers Local Three Two Four. These are our security officers. This agreement has already been ratified by their union.
All right, so we have gone through this. I would like to take a vote. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. All right, motion passes. The agenda has been adopted. Doctor Vartanian Gibbs.
Thank you, President McQuine. Good evening. I have the honor and pleasure to introduce you to our new second grade teacher at Dotson Elementary School, Jessica Cullen. Jessica comes to us with a bachelor's degree from Central Michigan University, a master's degree from Grand Valley State University. She also comes with five years of experience, and what's very exciting is that she will be teaching in one of our brand-new classrooms at Dotson School, the first one there, the second grade one. So we're very thankful for that, and congratulations, Jessica. Okay, also this evening, I would like to recognize Mark Whitlock for his nineteen years of service in our school district. He is going to be doing some other things now at this time in his career. So thank you, Mark, for all of your work in our district. Also, tenure recommendation from Megan Tyler. She has successfully completed five years of teaching at the Starkweather Academy, and here is what Kevin Lane would like to share about Megan Tyler. Megan is an extremely dedicated teacher and student advocate. She works with students to provide every opportunity for success and guides them in overcoming whatever barriers they may have. Megan has worked on the district-level social studies curriculum team and added teaching certifications while with Starkweather Plymouth Canton Community Schools. Megan has adapted her experience in video editing and her English certification to create a video class that meets both art and music standards, depending on student need. It is my pleasure to recommend her for tenure with the Plymouth Canton Community Schools. Congratulations, Megan. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. And now, next up, we have celebrating success, which is always a highlight, and it is Member Wilson.
All right, good evening, everyone. This evening, we're really excited to celebrate success. We'll, and we're gonna honor a Discovery Middle School student, Daniel Niehaus, for his outstanding display of sportsmanship during the cross-country season this past fall. Recently, a parent from Pioneer Middle School took the time to share a story with us about Daniel immediately walking over to congratulate his opponent after a race. We'll learn a little bit more about that. Parent noted that Daniel's positivity was very encouraging and memorable, especially in these tiring times. Daniel represents an inspiring reminder that it is often the little things that our students do that often go unnoticed that can make a positive and lasting impact on others. The single showing of sportsmanship shows the importance of always caring about others, whether that is in times of great triumph or difficult defeat. I would like to invite Discovery Middle School Principal Terry Sawchuck to the podium to share more details about Daniel's positive representation of the Discovery community and PCCS as a whole.
First of all, thank you for recognizing Daniel tonight. Daniel's a great student and a great citizen, so when his act of sportsmanship was reported to me, it wasn't a surprise. We at Discovery are very proud of Daniel and your act of kindness that you displayed at the cross-country meet against Pioneer. You've represented your family, Discovery Middle School, and the Plymouth Canton Community School in the manner that we want all of our student athletes to display at all student events. Daniel, congratulations.
Hey, Daniel, real quick, before you go away, let me say a couple word things. So thank you on behalf of the Board of Education. We're presenting Daniel Niehaus with the Stars Award for Students with Tenacity Achieving and Reaching Success. We just wanna thank you because, you know, my understanding is that you're a heck of a competitor, and in that race specifically, you actually fell a little short. And your opponent was exhausted, and you immediately walked over to him, helped him up, and encouraged him. And, you know, that's powerful. And so we just wanna thank you for demonstrating us because the, or supporting us and really highlighting the best that PCCS has to offer. And so I gotta ask you to say a few words.
And thanks to the Board of Education for giving me this award. I mean, I didn't really see it as that special. I mean, that's what I usually do every time someone does something better. Like in soccer, no matter what, after the game, you always can congratulate the other players, the other team, and that's what I just thought for cross-country. He won by one, like, one second, something like that in front of me. So I just wanted to congratulate him for beating me, 'cause he, I think, was the only person, other than the league meet, that actually beat me.
That's fantastic. Thank you for your sportsmanship. You guys make some noise for Daniel.
Ah, congratulations. Thank you so much for that show of sportsmanship. Next up, we are on to see which is Board Committee Reports in Action. First up is the President's Report. First of all, today, Members Sedu and I worked on a little statement about the tragedy in Oxford. As a school community, due to more in the loss of students in Oxford, the School Board would like to express our deepest condolences to all the students, staff, families, and community members who have been affected by this tragedy. Our schools must be places where children and school staff are safe in a welcoming environment. Families should not have to worry that their child will return home from school safely. The members of School Board and Superintendent Merritt take the safety of all students and staff very seriously. This year, much of our work has been on the development of the New Dynamic Plan. One of our strategic objectives is that all students and staff feel safe at school, and we remain committed to providing a safe educational experience. We would like to thank Superintendent Merritt, Director Meyer, and all of the district staff for their service and commitment to the students and families in our school community. This has been a very difficult week, and we really appreciate it. So we have, with the Thanksgiving break, we have not had a lot on our plates. So we're just going to move on to committee reports, student performance and achievement with Members Sedu.
Thank you, President McQuine. We went through the three items that you all will hear more about under Teaching and Learning, which include the NWEA Fall Results, and we're gonna look at a resolution for course adjustments for two of the social studies courses, as well as a resolution for oral language. Again, all of those will be discussed in detail later today. Oh, I'm sorry, next meeting. I wanna make sure everybody knows to attend the next meeting, which is January twelfth at five PM.
All right, next up is policy, and we met tonight, actually, at five-thirty in the collaboration space. We had, our agenda looked very long, but three of the policies were kind of repeated, depending on where they fall in the policy book. So we have, we worked on our education and racial equity policy, annual report, student records. We had a few cleanup things on some of those, and then non-discrimination, equal opportunity, anti-harassment. We got those pretty much cleaned up. And just as a reminder to the community, starting in our next meeting, January eleventh, we will be changing somewhat of the format of the citizens' comments. You will need to fill out the form prior to, prior to the meeting starting. We will also have a form that is a little larger. It is the form with the directions you've been seeing, and then a copy of the actual policy about citizens' comments that you can tear off and keep. And we will have this posted on the agenda, and we'll remind people at the beginning of the meeting, in case they wanted to do a comment, to get that in. Our next meeting is not until the new year. It is January twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two, at five-thirty in the collaboration space. So feel free to come. We did have a citizen attend tonight. Up next is Finance and Operations with Member Keough.
Thank you. We met last Thursday, and we discussed the S R three survey that recently has been concluded for the district to provide feedback and input to the district on the priorities from the community and how to spend those S R three funds. We discussed some revisions to the High School One project, that's the auditorium project. It'll be up on the agenda this evening to discuss those. And we talked about a slight change in the technology as part of the emergency connectivity funds update, which will also be on the agenda this evening. Our next meeting is Thursday, January sixth, at five PM here in this room, and the community is welcome.
All right, thank you so much. Member Chessang is not here, so we will move on to administrative reports and recommendations. Up first is Superintendent Merritt.
Thank you, President McQuine, and thank you for beginning this meeting with those words concerning the tragedy in Oxford and our commitment from the board through the classroom to the safety of our students. It is definitely with a heavy heart that we continue to navigate this week, based on those tragic unimaginable events of last week. Understandably, events such as this can be very traumatic for students and staff and our entire school community. And historically, when incidents such as this occur, we often see copycat situations a few weeks after. And unfortunately, that has also been the case here in PCCS. I will share that to date, we have investigated over twenty individual situations that basically were either copycat reproductions on social media of threats. I am pleased to say that we take every threat seriously, we investigate thoroughly, and we did not find any of these threats or reposts or reproductions to be credible. They did result in the school closing on Friday, and I know that people have questions about timing, but literally, our school personnel, in conjunction with our local law enforcement partners, were investigating each incident throughout the night, and at about three forty-five in the morning, if we're not able to say this threat is credible or not, say safety is our number-one priority, we then made that decision to close schools so that we can completely vet those and say that our buildings are safe for in-person learning. With this, I do wanna take the time to, again, thank Director Meyer and the entire school safety personnel staff and all of our school administrators, our teachers that have helped to vet each of these situations, literally getting calls, as I said, early into the morning, our local law enforcement partners. I have such an incredible amount of respect for our partners, always have, but in particular through this situation, our local, our state, FBI, all working together. Each situation, at times even, carried us outside of our local community, so they were going to neighboring counties to investigate, and just all hands on deck. Our local police officials and partners showing an increased presence at our schools last week and will continue this week and throughout, as long as it is necessary, to ensure, again, that we're working together to keep our school environment safe. But just a commitment and a determination, I just wanna continue to lift their names up and show our appreciation. I do wanna continue to talk to our students and our families about the importance of having these discussions. And, you know, at times, you know, there's different reasons why students have reported. They see something. For example, we saw one threat that said C H S. And of course, every school that has a C H S, we have, Canton assumed that that could be about Canton High School. And so that is something that was reproduced across social media, not just here in PCCS, but across the country, is what we found. That was a post that was actually reproduced from two thousand and eighteen in New Mexico. So that's the type of thing that was occurring. We had to chase down a situation that cited Liberty Middle School, and it was actually in reference to a Liberty Middle School in Georgia in two thousand and nineteen. But that is something that is seen, it's copied, and at times, it may be students just saying, hey, is this us? And reproducing it, and other times, it may take on a different character. And so for us, we need all students to know that this is very serious, and if they are involved in any threats, that could be a felony charge and will be prosecuted to the greatest extent of the law. And so we need to make sure that we all continue to educate our students about the importance. Right now, social media, unfortunately, is just not our friend in this space. And so just keeping engaged in those conversations with our young people, because decisions that they make to either intentionally participate in some rumors and spreading of threats or sometimes not intentionally, could result in serious consequences, school consequences, as well as consequences in the legal system. And so we want, that we encourage our young people to talk to a trusted adult. If they see a threat, report that to an adult, to law enforcement. We wanna make sure that we get these threats, if they see something, if they hear something, using the okay-to-say to school officials, to law enforcement again, but really refrain from having those conversations shared on, on social media, because that just makes situations so much more disruptive. I know that we've received quite a few questions from our families, and understandably so, anxiety already. We are, we're in a high-anxiety space with COVID and all that has gone on, just navigating a pandemic. And now we have this unimaginable event that has occurred in a school district so close to ours. So if parents, of course, and family and staff even, just have questions around our security measures. So we tried to communicate this Sunday in a communication as we prepared to return to school about some of our investments over the years. I need to really ask that everyone respect the fact that we can't give details of our security plans if we're trying to keep our, our students and staff safe. But I did offer the assurance that in two thousand and seventeen, PCCS did partner with a security consultant service, and we conducted a full audit on our, a security audit on our school facilities, and that resulted in a lot of the investments that we were able to make through our two thousand and twenty bond that incurred, included our secured vestibules, the investment of security cameras in all of our schools and buildings, additional radios that you approved, I think it was at the last meeting. The addition of a command center at PSEP on the campus, but that command center is for all buildings in the district, so it allows us to get real-time information in an emergency situation. One thing that I will share is, we, we talk about training of staff. We know that we also began ALICE training for our staff. ALICE stands for Alert, Lockdown, Inform, Counter, Evacuate. We began that training for all staff in two thousand and nineteen. We started with administrators, teachers, paraprofessionals. We actually had our training for the secretarial group. It was scheduled on March the tenth and the eleventh, and that's when COVID hit, and we had a pause to that training. But we do definitely have plans to continue with refresher courses for those staff that have been trained, as well as we've had so many new hires, so we wanna make sure that all staff is aware. We also had plans for students at that time, and so we'll continue on with those plans. I did share that the district recently hired a new safety and security manager, and Eric Colkey. That name is familiar to our district. He actually is retired from Canton PD, and he actually performed as a part of his, when he was with PD, he performed the training for our school district initially. He is a certified Alex instructor, and he's an expert in the field of active assailant and threat assessment, and he truly is top-notch an expert in the field. He has trained regional law enforcement officers on this training. So we're so fortunate to have he and Director Meyer here leading this work for our school district. So we immediately tasked him, we hired him in August, with reviewing our emergency operating plans and facilitating this ongoing training for all district staff. We're looking to facilitate or expedite, you know, the plan that was already in place prior to this, and so we'll communicate with our school community, which might involve us using a day out of school for students, but having a PD day in the upcoming weeks, just so that we can make sure that we're doing that refresher training. When we go through situations such as this, even with the best-laid plans, you know, at times, it, it, there could be some uncertainty around, around certain trainings, and so we wanna make sure that everyone is equipped with the information that they need to ensure that everyone is safe. Also, just wanted to share, again, our partnership with our local law enforcement officers, and know that we're constantly meeting and working with them to discuss best practices, to review our emergency operation plans. Every school in the state of Michigan is required to have an emergency operating plan. We're required to have lockdown drills, fire drills. This is posted on our website. Lockdown drills, for example, we have to annually have three drills, and so we are in compliance with that. Also, just reviewing and revising our plans, our assessments. And I am so confident, and as you know, my own children have gone through this district, and our staff, our administrators, I trust them with my own children, I trust them with my own life. I, I, I want to thank them as well for just helping us to navigate this at the building level. So also hearing with Director Meyer and Mr. Colkey about our plans and, and the confidence in, in how strong our plans are, always knowing, though, that there is improvement, and that's the importance of continuing to review and revise, and that's what we're working through at this time. And so just wanted to share at a high level, without giving a lot of details, once again, that we have strong plans in place that are being reviewed and revised, and ongoing training will continue to occur for our entire staff. Once again, we're just thankful for our entire staff, our school community, our students, everyone who has just invested in doing the right thing to keep our school community safe. Again, we ask all of our families to remind your students about the importance of sharing information with a trusted adult, school employee, or law enforcement official, instead of circulating it around among students on social media. We, again, encourage the use of state of Michigan's okay-to-say tip line, that number one eight five 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 six five two seven two nine, or you can text six five two seven two nine, or you can send an email to okaytosey@michigan@mi.gov. Got that out. So again, thank you so much. We'll continue to just try to improve and increase communication in this time, and you can never, you know, sometimes people feel you're communicating too much, sometimes it's not enough, but our goal right now is erring on the side of over-communication, just to make sure that we have transparency and we can answer all of the questions that are coming forward to us, to just give some confidence as we continue to navigate this difficult time together. So thank you all for that.
Thank you. So next up, we are at Teaching and Learning with Miss Rail.
Yep, and it's my pleasure to welcome Anthony Ruela, Executive Director of Middle School Data and School Improvement. And we are going to be doing an overview of the two thousand and twenty-one Fall NWA Assessment Data.
Oh, thank you, sir. Ooh, I don't have enough space on here.
Well, good evening, everybody. I appreciate the opportunity to be in front of the board this evening and share an overview of our Fall two thousand and twenty-one NWA Assessment Administration. As our community has come together to support learning over the past two years, I've often heard families and staff expressing concerns that our students are falling behind. And the concern is absolutely understandable, as we've had multiple conversations at this level, teaching and learning in the buildings, in the communities, about the uninterrupted, the interrupted and unfinished instruction that our students have experienced. It's important, however, I believe, to put some context around the word "behind." To do this, we need to consider some questions. Behind who? Be, in what? By how much? And, and just as important, if not more important, are our students moving forward and growing? And during tonight's presentation, we're gonna review some data that will provide some perspective to help us begin to answer those questions. My time in front of you tonight is dedicated to a review of our testing process and overview of aggregate achievement and growth results. An analysis of disaggregated results will be shared in February as part of our benchmark testing reporting requirements that are required by state legislation. In addition, we will share the structures and strategies that we presented last year with the intention of impacting student achievement. Finally, we'll have an overview of some structures currently in place and present the next steps in the data review and analysis that will continue to inform our decision-making. Before we look at the specific numbers, some global observations that we made in the area of reading are that our overall fall achievement in grades K through eight is aligned with historical fall performance on the NWEA. We saw an increase in above-average fall achievement in students in grades one through five. We saw a decrease in fall achievement in grades six through eight when compared from last year in reading. With respect to math, we see an increase in overall fall achievement in grades K through eight from last year. We also see a steady increase in above-average fall achievement in grades one, in grade one, over the past four years. And finally, we'll see an increase in fall achievement in grades two through eight when compared to last year. With respect to student growth, and that's looking at growth from the fall of two thousand and twenty to the fall of two thousand and twenty-one, we see that as aggregate grade levels that students met or exceeded expected growth in grades three through eight in reading and met exceeded or expected growth as grade levels in grades three through seven in math. So as a brief reminder to those new to the presentation, whether here in, in the Board of Education room or watching at home, the NWEA MAP Growth Assessment, which we refer to simply as the NWEA, is a nationally-normed computer adaptive assessment that measures a student's academic achievement and growth. The fact that the NWEA is nationally-normed means that we're able to compare our students' achievement of growth, achievement and growth, with achievement and growth of students across the nation, which will help us with answering that question, "Behind whom?" Right, that's gonna, that, keep that in, in our forefront. Computer adaptive describes tests that are designed to adjust the difficulty of items presented to match the ability of the student. For example, if a student answers a question correctly, the computer follows up with a more difficult question. However, if the student answers incorrectly, the next question will be easier. This feature of the NWEA is what allows the test to communicate to teachers and families what students know and are able to do at that point in time when that student takes the assessment. While there are multiple content areas available in the While there are multiple content areas available in the MAP Growth Suite, we only administer the reading and math assessments to students in grades K through eight. There are three different levels of tests that we administer, and it's really important for our consideration when we look at the data. The first, the Math K2, is administered to students in kindergarten and first grade. This test provides audio support to all students, which means that the test basically is read to the student for all intents purposes. This is because kindergarten and first grade students are pre- and emergent readers. So they're assessing different kinds of information there. Students in grades, in kindergarten and grades one are tested in all three terms, the fall, the winter, and the spring, because there are no state assessments for those grade levels in the spring. The MAP 2.5 is administered to our students in grades two through five. There's no audio support for the 2.5 test. Teachers, however, at their discretion, can utilize a variety of accommodations for the test, one of which is having the test items read aloud to the student if appropriate. You may be wondering that why we administer the 2.5 to second graders when we have the option to offer them the K2 test. We do this because while we know that some of our second graders are still emergent and not independent readers, we do need to know early on in second grade their level of independent reading, so that our teachers in our buildings can provide the appropriate instruction and intervention in real time in second grade before waiting to the end and finding out in third grade, really, where they are as an independent and emergent reader. So the NWEA, in coordination with the BAS, really provides teachers with that important early diagnostic and instructional information. Just like students in grades in kindergarten and first grade, students in second grade do take the NWEA in all three terms because there is no second-grade M-step assessment. Students in grades three through five, however, are tested only in the fall and the winter because the M-step does serve as the spring assessment for these grade levels. Finally, the MAP 6+ is administered to all students in middle school. The one exception is fifth-grade students who are in the tag program at Galimore. And that's because those students actually are instructed in the sixth-grade curriculum in math while at Galimore. So that's, it's an appropriate assessment for them at that time. Similar to upper elementary, middle school students are only tested in the fall and winter terms because in those grades, middle school grades, we have the M-step as the third data point in the spring. Because we'll be looking at student growth over the past year from the fall 2020 to the fall 21, I want to review the different administration modalities that we've implemented over the past two years. This year, all students in the virtual academy took the NWEA fall, the NWEA in the fall remotely, in line with their instructional modality as being students in the virtual academy. Likewise, all students who are attending in-person learning were assessed in person. Last year, that was not the case. In the fall of 2020, most of our students received instruction remotely. As a result, in addition to students in the virtual academy, all, and these are students who are eventually Safe Start, all Safe Start students in grades three through eight were assessed remotely. We were, however, able to assess our K2 students in person as they returned to in-person learning before the end of the testing window. We really felt it was important to wait for those students till the end to make sure that our youngest learners could navigate the technology of the online test. And I do want to remind the board that I did present last year that during last year's fall data analysis, that we found no evidence to indicate that our aggregate student performance in the remote administration differed from the expected performance that we had for those students if they were in person. And that finding is in line with the NWEA research that they reported and I presented last year with respect to any potential differences between remote instruction and in-person instruction on the NWEA. So just as a quick reminder of how we use the data, so the primary purpose of the NWEA is to help teachers understand what students know and are able to do right now so that they can use this information in real time to inform instruction. Teachers use NWEA data to identify individual student strengths and weaknesses, as well as identifying class trends. This supports their planning for whole-group instruction and individual differentiation. Service providers, such as resource room teachers, English, ELD teachers, and interventionists, use the data to write student goals, plan for and provide instruction, and measure student growth over time. At the district level, the data is used in a wide variety of ways to screen students for program eligibility. For example, NWA data is used for screening for such supports as 31A and Title I interventions, as well as for extensions, such as advanced math classes and tag eligibility. The Curriculum and Instruction Department looks at trends over time to understand and evaluate how well our curriculum is aligned. And the Teaching and Learning Department and Building Administration uses the data to evaluate the success of our school and district improvement initiatives. Finally, the NWA serves as our benchmark assessment that is required by last year's benchmark assessment legislation. And as a reminder, that legislation required districts to administer one of four approved assessments, benchmark assessments, to all students in grades K through eight at least two times a year. It's important to note that because we are already using the NWEA in a similar fashion in the similar intervals as required, this mandate did not add any assessments to our assessment calendar. So as a final step to set the stage for our data review, I want to remind the board and our community of the many activities that were implemented last year to support learning. As a system, our initial focus was ensuring that students had access to our teachers and the great instruction that they provide. And we addressed this through the development of the virtual academies, the implementation of the Canvas LMS system, by deploying technology and hotspots to families in need of such support, and by accelerating the adoption of the K5 math resources to make sure that staff had access to the additional digital resources that were within the curriculum adoption. We also understood early on that we needed to create space for our students' wellness, and our staff implemented SEL lessons in grades K through 12. Finally, to support an intentional focus on literacy in grades K through five, we implemented targeting coaching in reading and math at the elementary level. Specifically looking at classroom instruction in reading, we focused on phonemic awareness with our earliest emerging readers, and we emphasized small-group instruction as a tool for meeting students' individual needs across all grade levels. To support math instruction and differentiation, we implemented computer adaptive resources in grades K through eight, developed home support materials for students in grades K through five, and focused on developing students' application of understanding through problem-solving throughout grades K through 12. Finally, while we have recently shared the unprecedented summer programming that we are able to offer students this year due to the support of the grant funding the district received, it's really important to remind ourselves and just give an opportunity to shout out all the wonderful staff and community members who made the summer work that we did in those summer experiences for our students possible. All right, now to the part that Patrick Keough was waiting for. This is the trustee Keough member time of the presentation. So since I'm on the stage, we're going to look at our aggregate achievement results. And as a reminder, we will share the disaggregated results in early February. And as we look at these achievement results through a couple different lenses, we're going to look at it in, to explore and answer those questions, try to answer those questions, "Behind who? In what? And by how much?" We're going to begin by looking at student achievement and breaking that, those results down into three achievement bands. Starting with the above-average achievement, this refers to students who scored in the 61st to the 99th percentile range on the NWEA. And it's the same for both math and reading. To give an example, a student who is at the 75th percentile for achievement is considered in the above-average range because they've performed better than 74% of their grade-level peers. And that's compared to the nationally-normed sample, norming study that NWA did. And I'm going to remind everybody, and I'll remind them again, that this study is based upon pre-pandemic performance. Okay? So the numbers that we're comparing our students to right now is a pre-pandemic ideal. Well, not ideal, really, it's real data that happened. Students in the average range fall in the 41st to 60th percentile band, and students in the below-average range fall within the 1st to the 40th percentile band. So digging into the data, this table represents the reading achievement distribution of students in grades one through eight in aggregate over the past four years. I know that normally, we just present three years of data. But for looking at achievement, because the fall of 2018 and fall of 2019 were pre-pandemic years, and then we had the interrupted instruction of the fall of 2020 and the fall of 2021, we really want to represent four years of data to really have a more broad scope and really present the context. So as we look across the four years, we observe relatively, relative stability in the percentage of students represented in each category. This fall, 60% of our students performed in the above-average range in reading. 19% fell in the average range, and 21% fell in the below-average range. And really, this is about the same as we've seen in the previous three years. When we isolate students in just first grade, we see that compared to last fall, the percentage of students with above-average achievement increased, and those with below-average achievement decreased. So looking historically, this falls, the falls data of 2021 really compares favorably with previous performance for students in grades one in reading. Looking at the reading achievement of students in grades two through five, we see that student performance is holding relatively steady over time, with slight increases in the percentage of students in the above-average performing band, and a slight decrease in the below-average band when we look compared to last fall. For students in grades six through eight, however, we see a decline in performance when compared to last year. This shows up as an increase in the percentage of students in the below-average performance band, and a decrease in the percentage of students in the above-average band. Transitioning to math, this table represents the math achievement distribution of students in grades one through eight in aggregate over the past four years. Here, we see a little bit of a different pattern than in reading. As we look across the four years, last fall, we observed an overall decrease in the above-average achievement and an increase in the below-average achievement. And that was in the fall of 2020. This fall, we do see some encouraging signs as the percentage of students in the above-average category has increased when compared to last fall, and the percentage of students in the below-average range fell slightly. When we look just specifically at first graders, like we did in reading, we see an overall improvement in student achievement over last year and a steady increase in the percentage of students in the above-average achievement band over the past four years. Looking at grades two through five, we see an overall improvement in performance when compared to last fall as indicated by a jump in the percentage of students in the above-average band and a decrease in the percentage of students in the below-average band. We're not quite at our historical performance levels, but this fall's data should provide some optimism that we're getting back on track. Looking at students in grades six through eight, we see fall performance similar to last fall's. While it's disappointing that we not see the improvements observed at the elementary level, it should be noted that our relative stability suggests that our students may be beginning to get on track by catching up to some, and getting on track to catch up to our historical performance. We hold this position because early analysis and reporting from NWEA suggests that across the nation, students at the upper grades, so for us, we're really just looking at sixth or eighth grade, but really, it would, you know, students in high school and other districts do take NWEA, that across the nation, NWA is reporting that students in the upper grades are demonstrating more significant decreases in achievement than we've noticed with our students. And we do interpret this as caution, however, as the NWEA hasn't released their Fall 2021 analysis yet. So we're still holding off a little bit of caution, but I just wanted to share that in the upper grades, comparatively speaking to what NWA has presented so far, that we have not seen the decreases that have been reported across the nation. So for this next bit of analysis, we're going to look at the three-year achievement trends of individual cohorts of students. For this review, we define cohorts as groups of students for whom we have three years of test data. So exploring this data will help inform our understanding of how students are advancing in their own individual achievement over time, right? So when we, we were talking about compared to whom, we talked about the national sample before. Now, when we're talking about compared to whom, we're, it's apples to apples. We're talking about students compared to themselves. So when we look at, this chart looks at the reading achievement of our five elementary-grade cohorts, where we have the five cohorts on the horizontal axis, and we have average achievement percentile on the vertical axis. This red line at the 50th percentile represents the average performance of students in the NWEA's normative sample. So when we look at a cohort, I'm just going to take a second to focus on the first-grade cohort here, you'll see only two bubbles, right? That's because these students are in first grade in the 21-22 school year. They were in kindergarten in the 2021 school year. They were not in school, well, they might have been in preschool, but we didn't give them the NWEA in 2019-20. So in turn, and similarly in second grade, right? The number on the right represents second-grade performance, first-grade performance, kindergarten performance, third-grade performance, second-grade performance, first-grade performance, and so on. So looking across from our first-grade cohort all the way through to our fifth-grade cohort, we see that each group either matched or improved their average percentile ranking from last year, and that all cohorts improved even slightly, even if it's slightly, from three years ago. And that's in reading for our elementary cohorts. When we look at the reading achievement of our three middle school cohorts, again, we have the cohorts on the horizontal axis, achievement on the vertical axis, the national norm at the 50th percentile across the middle. And looking across the three cohorts, we do see slight decreases in performances in the cohorts for all groups over time. So, and I'm not going to sit and look at the charts, but these are the data tables that align with the previous charts. So I'm not going to, but they're there for your purview as you so desire. So moving over to the math achievement, cohort achievement over time, we're looking at our elementary cohorts again, first grade, second grade, and so on. And here, we're observing some mixed results. For students, the grade three, four, and five cohorts, we see improvements when compared to last year, okay, in all three of those cohorts. In first grade and second grade, however, we see slight declines that necessitate a little bit more investigation by our instruction department. When we look at our middle school math cohorts, we see moving across all three cohorts, couldn't get my laser pointer to work there, we see improved, increasing in performance at all three cohort levels from last year to this year. Again, data tables for your consumption at your leisure. And finally, we're going to look at student growth. If I can get the page to turn. And again, this is going to be aggregate growth against, across our grade levels as measured by whether our grade- as measured by whether, uh, our grade levels, again, in aggregate, are meeting or exceeding their, their aggregate growth targets as set forth by N W E A's growth projections, okay? So N W E A sets the growth projections and then in these graphs, we're going to see how well our grade levels did at meeting those growth projections. And again, I'm going to remind you that these growth projections are based upon, uh, uninterrupted instruction. So this chart represents the annual growth of our students from the fall term of one year to the fall term of the next. It's a great statistic to look at because it shows student growth between two grade levels and illustrates how much students grew relative to how much they were projected to grow over an entire year. So I'm going to describe the charts just a, a little bit. So you see two comparison periods represented from the fall of two thousand nineteen, fall of twenty twenty. And then up top, you'll see the fall of twenty twenty to this fall, fall of twenty twenty-one. The diamonds represent projected achievement growth, projected growth, uh, for each grade level. The top part of the diamond, uh, is the top of the projected range and the bottom part of the diamond is the bottom part of the projected range. Uh, the blue bar represents the observed growth. So what was actually observed, what the students actually did, uh, in terms of their growth and achievement from one testing period, the fall of one year to the fall of the other. Because projected growth is in a range, is a range and that range is, uh, shown as the diamond, okay? If the blue bar is touching or eclipsing that diamond, that shows, it's a good thing, right? It shows that, uh, students have either met or beginning to exceed the growth targets that were set by N W E A. If there's white space between the blue bar and the bottom of the diamond, well, that's not such a good thing. And that shows where our students at that grade level did not meet the projected growth as set forth by N W E A. So just a couple more things about this chart, uh, because there's a, a little bit of detail behind the scenes that will help you interpret it. Projected growth is based upon prior achievement, okay? So for these charts, the grade level's baseline score is the fall of that first year. Then the grade level is assigned a growth projection based upon what N W A has found from previous studies, um, for all other grade levels who had similar performance on that baseline, okay? And again, so if that gray, if this gray bar is touching the diamond or going through the diamond, that's a good thing. The students have met and potentially exceeded that target. If there's white space, then that target has not been met. Another question that, uh, people have often is that the height of the gray bars are different and actually gets smaller as it goes up in grade levels. That's completely expected, right? Because our youngest learners have much further to grow than our older learners. So that, that decline, or that, uh, change in bar size is completely expected. And then finally, you're going to notice as though, it appears as though our second graders never ever hit their growth target, right? And, and that's because there's a little bit of, of a discrepancy in the way that N W E A, um, reports their second-grade data. So when N W A does their data analysis, they put together in the same group students that take the K-two and second graders that take the two-five. So it's a mix of all of those students. For us, our students just take the two-five, which is the harder assessment. So, um, it's, uh, as we go through these graphs, I'm going to ask you to not necessarily pay attention to grade two because that, the data, the way N W A reports it and how we actually test our students is not an apples-to-apples comparison. So now that we have an, uh, understanding of the data and the structure of the chart, we can compare the difference in the growth years. So on a purely visual le- level, we can see that grade levels three through grade level eight from this past fall, all met or exceeded their growth projections. And really, really looking at three through eight, grades three through eight, we are just meeting our growth projections here, okay? Um, first grade, right, unlike last year, first grade did not meet their projected growth, um, which is, is something that our, our instruction department will continue, uh, to look into a little bit deeper. So in this graph, we're going to look at our fall-to-fall growth comparison, uh, in math. And again, purely on a visual level, we can see that for this past year, grade, students in grades three through seven all met or exceeded their growth targets as a grade level. Uh, first year, first grade, unlike first grade last year, did not meet their projected growth. Also, eighth grade, um, similar to last year, eighth grade did not meet their projected growth. But, uh, uh, my, it's not working. Um, but you, like, it's visual, but you, we're getting a little bit closer there, is what, what I wanted to say. And despite those two disappointing data points, it's a very encouraging to see that grades three through seven all demonstrated stronger growth during last school year than they did in the nineteen-twenty school year. So that's really encouraging news. So in summary, while we understand that we're looking at aggregate data and the N W E A is but one data point in many that we use to measure student performance, there really is a lot to be encouraged by. In most grade levels, in, uh, content areas, both content areas, students are growing in their performance during the most challenging two years in my thirty-year career. This speaks to the skill and dedication of our teachers, the resiliency of our students, and the support of both students and teachers have received from the Board of Education, families, and the community at large. In looking the next steps, we're going to use the N W A data like the same way we always do. Teachers have already started using the data to inform their classroom instruction. Building administrators are reviewing the data, identifying students that need additional support and making sure that these students are connected with the interventions that they need. And at the teaching and learning level, we're using this data to support buildings' identification of students for support and intervention. And we're also working to break down that data to explore demographic trends and evaluate the impact of the actions and initiatives that we've been implementing, uh, last year. And finally, we're going to use this data from the fall and winter terms to inform our summer programming needs and offerings that we're able to do. So, speaking of activities and initiatives we're currently implementing or have on the horizon, in the realm of staffing, we've added positions to support English learner instruction as well as the overall social, emotional wellness of students. The technology department is adding additional staff to improve student and staff access to devices and online learning resources. We've also increased our instructional coaches to better support teachers' work as they, uh, really strive to meet individual student needs. Academically, we're continuing many of the structures that were put into place last year. Two new items are the implementation of the Panorama platform to assist buildings with their implementation of M T S S as well as the focused realignment of coaches to provide more targeted support to teachers at particular grade levels. So thinking finally about the next steps, I will be back in front of you in February and April to present our board reports as required by the benchmark assessment legislation. This slide represents the data that you can expect to see in each of those presentations. And with that, I am happy to take any questions that you may have.
Sean.
I'm going to defer to, uh, Keyhole, no, I'm just playing.
I'm glad it's just not me.
It's always good to go after Patrick. So, so if I'm summarizing, really what, what you're, what you're saying is that our students are performing on par with where they should be performing across the board. Is that right?
Uh, I would say there's some areas where, um, the performance is less than expected, especially at the, uh, middle-school grades. But the, that's also in the context of, um, we're performing better than the respect to upper-grade, um, declines in performance that have been seen across the nation. So not where we want to be, um, but optimistic in terms of perhaps better than, uh, some others might have predicted.
And then, um, I think it was at the end of last school year, you, uh, presented a presentation. And what I recall from that presentation, and if you can tell me the difference between this presentation and that presentation, but what I recall from that presentation was a heavy focus on the upper grades nine through twelve and the, the learning loss or unfinished learning, uh, the, the impact of that. And so it was, it was definitely a different, you know, presentation and definitely, you know, a different set of outcomes uh, that, that we were seeing and kind of impacting. Maybe one of you guys remember, but can, can you recall what that presentation was? What those metrics were that you were sharing and, and the differences?
Yeah, so I don't remember sharing nine through twelve metrics because we only give, uh, N W E A through the, the eighth grade. Am I missing something?
Yep, well, last year we shared, um, course credits.
Oh, okay.
At nine through twelve, and that's where we saw an impact. And so we will be doing that as well as we look to course credit, as we look at semester grades.
Yeah, and that'll be part of that February, um, presentation.
Got you, because I remember some big gaps there.
Yeah.
And so it almost feels like, and maybe I'm jumping the gun on this, but it feels like there's this bookend impact that's happening. So you saw, you know, a pretty, uh, big impact on the first graders. And then if, if, you know, if it stands that from the nine through twelve graders, there's an impact, it, it feels like there could be kind of this bookend impact that we have to address, is that?
Yeah, and one of the things that will be helpful when we look at, uh, like semester grades, even six through eight, right? You know, the, it's measuring two different things. So we, you know, you're, you're measuring achievement, right? What students can do on one particular test. When we look at grades, right, that's over a longer time period, it has many more standards, right? So you're really measuring two different things, both are equally important, right? The N W A is one data point, um, but student grades are another data point, right? P S A T and things like that are other data points. So, um, they may not, oh, actually always align, you know? I've had many students who perform very, very well on static tests, but when it comes to earning credit, they really struggle because of all the other things and, um, and the timelines, right? Just, you know, having to sustain that performance over the course of a semester or a year for many kids are, is, is a challenge. So it's, it's measuring two different things.
Yeah, and you kind of mentioned that, you said this is but one data point, right? And there's many different, and I, I think this was a really good presentation. I'd be curious to, to look at those multiple data points, what the trends are, are saying overall, right? Because this one is very encouraging, the last data point was very discouraging. And so, you know, how do we take a look at them holistically? And then definitely the, you know, the, um, students that were already behind going into COVID, you know, that, that learning gap, you know, where, where does that stand? Uh, students of color, et cetera, et cetera. I, I would love to kind of see a bigger picture. And I don't want to detract from this because this was a great presentation and, you know, it, it shows, you can definitely show the bounce back, you know, to a certain extent. And I think that speaks to the resiliency of, of our kids, but also to the hard effort of the staff. So I don't want to pull from that, but my mind was just going to, a bigger picture to see how that's going to really impact, impact the district overall. And then finally, um, what I would love to see in some of these presentations is when you list like next steps, you know? Are, is, is there an ask of the board or is there a next step for the board? You know, um, you know, are you priming the pump for potential, a potential ask of the board at some point? Because as a board member, I'm looking for myself to say, how do I support this? And so the more that you can be direct on that, that, that would be fantastic.
Thank you.
Doug?
Yeah, I'm, I'm still trying to grasp on the, the, the lower projected growth through the years of why, why it's a lot lower than it is when it's, when they're younger, but, uh...
So I'll, I'll give you a quick piece. So the N W E A, the way that the score is reported is like inches on a ruler, okay? So if you've got a, a twelve-year-old that is six foot six, they're going to be at the ninety-ninth percentile, right? Because there's not many twelve-year-olds that are six foot six. But when you think about him, um, and, and that twelve-year-old, because they're six foot six, is only getting, like, they may never ever grow anymore. Whereas a twelve-year-old that is four foot five might have plenty of space to grow. So that, the, and it's the same way, just in terms with like standards, right? There's, learning is accumulated over time. And with respect to what the N W E A measures, the older students get, the less there is for them to grow in terms of what's measured by the N W A.
So, so after you, um, take that into consideration and apply more, um, you know, um, instruction to improve those, uh, the observed growths on that, is there any retesting to see if what you're doing actually works?
Yeah, that's, that's why we, we give the N W E A at a minimum of two times a year. Because, right, and it's the plan for instruction. So we, going into the fall, there's a baseline from the previous winter that students, teachers have for students. They get a new assessment in that fall to see how much that student has grown from the previous grade level in the winter to the fall. And then that helps them plan instruction for the winter. And then they know where a student is from winter to winter and they can plan instruction from the winter to that spring.
So have you got better improvements after, uh, when you retest them each time? So that, so it gets smaller, the, um, the gap gets smaller?
So it would depend upon the individual student.
Yeah, great presentation. Thanks.
Thank you.
Uh, Lauren?
You know, I, I really don't have any questions. I also want to say thank you for the, the presentation. I agree with member, um, Wilson about, you know, wanting to see the bigger picture. I think that's what we're going to see, we see the disaggregated information in February. So I'm, I'm really looking forward to that as well. I know you had mentioned that the N W A hasn't even, um, published their analysis of this yet. So I'm interested to learn about that one, that it, you know, is available. And I just want to say thank you for your presentation.
Well, you're welcome. Thank you.
Patrick?
First of all, great presentation. Um, you anticipated like, I have like seven questions that you answered going through this. So you, 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 you did a great job with, uh, with pulling it out and, and clarifying those things.
Justin Keyhole, we've, we've been through this.
This is not our first rodeo.
Yeah.
This is not our first rodeo.
We are, no, this is not our first rodeo. I love it.
So there's a couple of questions that I did have.
I'm, I'm disappointed in myself. I, I am living for the day when I anticipate them all.
You're really close, you're really close. On, on the student counts that you did on the, um, the, the average achievement, those student counts, is that, for which year is that student count for?
That is currently. So these are the students that we have, uh, so for example, in math grades three, five, these are the students right now enrolled at this moment who we have three years, well, not in first grade, but in second grade, who we have three years of data for.
Got it, so it's not necessarily all those students because there might have been new students or students that had left there, but for the people that took the test
Correct.
in, in this fall, that's what that student count number is for.
Correct, and it, they must have the two previous falls. It's like if a student missed the test because he was sick or on vacation, that student is not in that.
From the analysis.
Correct, we needed three specific years of data.
Okay, got it. That's, okay, and then the next question I had was, um, back on the, the, um, percentage of students in each achievement percentage band. I, you know, we've, we've lumped in grades two through five. So this is slide thirty, yeah, that's fine, that's there, yep. So, uh, we've lumped in grade, students in grades two through five and we've seen from the achievement data that we've got a big gap, uh, in, in the, in the projected growth for, for grade two. So I'm worried that we're losing some of the achievement band information by aggregating grades two through five here instead of showing grade two separately from grades three through five.
So when you're looking at achievement percentile, like, that would make sense in growth, but not achievement percentile because what they're, what you're looking at is you're looking at the N W E A achievement in the fall of second grade or the fall and that, that achievement percentile is across all second graders and they're take, our kids are taking the, the more challenging test, so.
I guess my hypothesis is that we would see lower numbers if we looked at grades. I guess my hypothesis is that we would see lower numbers if we looked at grades two in that process. That there would be, because they're taking a more challenging test, there would be a lower percentage of students in our grade two that were above average, because that average is an average against both tests that are there.
Right. But we're looking at that same group over the past four years, so it doesn't matter. It comes out in the wash. Because it's the same every single year. You see what I'm saying? Like, we would, even if I separated out the second graders for their achievement percentile and just looked at them over time.
Okay, so in other words, every second grade class would also have been at that lower number.
Yes, sir.
It's still okay. It would just be consistency across the numbers, but the numbers would still be lower when you're looking at the above average, the average, and the below average there. Because you actually have got the achievement data for second grade overall that's there, but we don't have the information to be able to look at those things in their rate of above average, average, or below average, that stratification that you've done.
Yeah, I haven't, it hasn't stood out to me looking at the grade level separately, but I'll go back and look at it. Because it's just, it's interesting. I hadn't looked at it exactly that way.
Okay, it's just a curiosity that I have. And then the last question I had was, when we looked at the achievement, I'm sorry, the projected growth numbers, and we look at the struggles that we had at the kindergarten level, we, I'm sorry, the first grade level, we saw previously a strong growth at the first grade level. And my question is, did we have a smaller percentage of people in kindergarten or in kindergarten last year than we normally have? Did more people stay home from kindergarten and homeschool and not get that education? Because this is a growth from kindergarten to first grade.
Correct. But those, the growth has to be students that were with us to take the test. Because you need two tests.
Okay, so if those people weren't here, you wouldn't, they wouldn't show up in this growth chart at all?
No, sir, because we have a growth score.
Okay, so then it's not that, it's something else.
It's students who are with us. Correct.
Okay.
Right?
Okay. Thank you very much. Great, great presentation though.
You are absolutely welcome.
Anupam?
Thank you. And actually, that's the conversation we had in SPA was around the numbers and the gaps and the people dropping off and coming back. So, and we had a chance to go through this in SPA last week or was it this week?
Last week.
Last week. So, I appreciate the changes you made in terms of looking at the data a little bit better. So, thanks for adding those changes. The questions I have are more around teaching and learning. So, Superintendent, I'll address this to you, and you can see who wants to take it. So, can you talk more about how teachers use this data to plan and adjust their instruction and their student goals, particularly when we see the middle school gaps?
Yeah, I can start. The, with respect to middle school, when teachers are looking at the data, primarily what they're doing is they're looking to be able to group students at, when they're at particular topics, right? So, they'll use the Learning Continuum, which is a aspect of NWEA. So, they know a particular topic is coming up, and they're going to say, okay, how do I want to group my students based upon their demonstrated achievement as I teach this topic? So, maybe depending upon what the topic is, it is beneficial to say, okay, I want students who have already demonstrated they know it. I want in this group, and I'm going to give them these pieces, and then I'm going to make sure that these students are together so I could support gaps that they may have. Or maybe it's better to say, okay, if I have students, I want to make sure that within this group, I have students who've demonstrated high achievement, middle achievement, and low achievement in that group for instruction. So, I can't speak specifically to any piece, but those are two ways that I've seen teachers using. Specifically for teachers of students with IEPs, I know they'll go through and I know because I did the training on how to use the data to write standards-based IEPs. So, they'll go in, they'll look at where students are strong and weak, isolate those standards, and they're able to write a scaffolded goal. So, like, let's say the student's in the seventh grade, the teacher is going to write a goal at that seventh grade standard. But they'll know, maybe the student's performance at that standard is their third grade version of that standard. So, third, fourth, fifth grade, what's that progression of skills that the student needs to achieve in order to make that seventh grade goal?
And so, at that point, do you also adjust the allocation of resources and support for the teachers, that additional support?
Yep. The other thing we do too, when you think about instructional coaching, the instructional coaches will look at this data as well, and they'll go in and provide supports for our teachers. We'll also do grade level PLC meetings and look at the data in the PLCs to think about and see, are we seeing strands? Are we seeing specific areas of focus that need to be elevated and spent more time on? What are some resources that we need that maybe are not currently in our curriculum that we layer on top of and provide additional supplemental support for? So, all of those things come into play from the disaggregation and, you know, at the student level of the NWA data, so.
So, are you having conversations around tutoring support if that's needed to?
Yep. That's actually the conversation we're having right now, most specifically at the middle school level. Because we saw, you know, you could hypothesize that much of what we did this summer and the tutoring that we layered on specifically around reading and math at the elementary level, potentially may have made the difference, some of the difference in this. And we're now layering on additional tutoring at the middle school level to support those needs as well. Because the area we're seeing where we didn't see as much growth as we'd like and as much bounce back as member Wilson indicated is the middle school. So, we need, we know we need to layer on some additional supports there. Tutoring is one of those supports that we'll be doing.
Okay, thanks. So, my next question is actually building off of member Wilson's questions about resources and how can the board support. So, do teachers have the resources and time needed to make these adjustments, knowing that there are some bigger gaps in different grade levels?
So, there's always, the issue of time is always an issue in education. The resources that we currently have are adequate to support these needs. When we look at additional tutoring and things like that, we're looking at additional outside-of-school support as well. So, we look at leveraging all different aspects, how are, how much our teachers can take on and do, and then do we need additional supports beyond that? When we look at resource support from the board perspective, right now, we're looking at using our SIR3 funds to intentionally target these areas. And of course, we will always come with the ask for the board as necessary. Right now, we have this moment in time where we do have all of these additional federal resources that are targeted for this very purpose. When we look at our interrupted learning, interrupted instruction, how do we help focus and, you know, layer on those additional supports? Time is always, is always a challenge in education. If, you know, I can't sit here and say that there's always enough time for everything, but what we try to do is focus and take off some things. This year, we've spent a lot of time talking about taking off things if late. So, we've done some intentional things to say, give back some time to be able to focus on these areas. We've talked with the building administrators. We've worked collaboratively to reduce some of the staff meeting type things and give more time for teachers to have these collaborative conversations.
I will say that the labor shortage has definitely impacted us this year. It's actually more challenging than last year. And so, at those times where teachers would often use that grade level or planning time, we're now having to pull them to help cover classes if we have an absent teacher and an absence of substitutes in some of the intervention positions and things along those lines. So, that, having the system in place is there, but having the actual people.
Correct.
This has definitely been a challenging year. And so, looking at these tutoring and after-school supports and really enhancing our summer opportunities will help to supplement some of the challenges we're dealing with right now.
And to Superintendent Merritt's point, you know, again, you know, we're often pulling different folks into classrooms that normally would provide some of these layered supports. The challenge for us is the answer is not more funding, it's actually more people, and those people aren't available. So, are we doing the best we can? We absolutely are. We'll continue to support and work and find folks and hire them even as late as now. And every, probably every board meeting, you're going to see us here saying, here's an additional new hire and those types of things.
I will also say, like, I'll continue, I haven't said this word in a while, but we just continue to ask for grace for our teachers because at times they're just barely holding on. There's so much expectations of them within the classroom as we're looking to this unfinished learning. The positive is that we're seeing that kids are able to bounce back. I think some of the intentional focus, even elementary, when we came back, numeracy, literacy, it helped our gap not be so great. But, you know, with everything that's going on and mitigation, mitigating COVID, it is definitely a struggle for our teachers as well. And so, continuing to give that grace, knowing that we will get there, and it may take time, but we will get there.
Right. And absolutely. I mean, I think everybody agrees, we've got to give credit to the teachers for putting in all of the effort to make sure that the gaps are minimized in such really challenging circumstances that none of us could have ever imagined. So, yes, you know, kudos to the teachers, the administrators, kids who've gone through this as well. And so, you know, the questions we're asking are really, let's make sure that we're doing everything we can from the board level to fill those gaps wherever we can help. And that's why I asked about the resources and the time. You know, if we can solve the time problem, that would be wonderful. And I don't know what that looks like, but we can talk more about that later. All right, thank you.
We're looking for some tutoring. Put it on your calendar.
Once again, member Kehoe.
I'm not the expert.
Thank you so much. I, most of my questions got answered. I'm really looking forward to seeing the NWA 2021, the fall data for all of it and seeing how they compare and the disaggregated data. I'm really more interested in seeing what those gaps are like. But I would like to remind, make sure everybody still realizes that many in our community are still being affected by the pandemic. We still have a lot of families that have, you know, lost income, lost loved ones. So, this, our children are not coming back to school always focused, ready to learn. So, I think this data looked good considering what we are dealing with. And I would like to thank the teachers and Superintendent Merritt and everyone for all the supports they're providing for our students. I think the SEL is probably really impactful, because if students are not in a good place to learn, they're not going to. So, thank you for all the work you've done with this.
Thank you, everybody. Have a wonderful evening.
You also. All right, we are down to, and now we are, consider approval of a resolution for course adjustment for two high school social studies, elective courses, honors, international relations, and Western Civilization, first reading.
Yep. So, thank you. As we do our curriculum review throughout the course of a couple of years, and Dr. Brady's been in front of you and talked about the curriculum cycle, one of the things we do in that review is we look at the course, we look at the standards that are earned in that course and the content that is covered in that course, to look at the alignment of the course. So, there are two courses that were recognized by the curriculum team, the curriculum committee consisting of teachers, our curriculum and instruction team, and administrators that oversee those areas. And two courses were brought forth and suggested for an adjustment in length and course credit. And those two courses are honors, international relations, and Western Civilization. Both of those courses currently are full-year courses that earn one credit each. The recommendation from the committee, based on the standards that are covered in the course, the course content, is to reduce the length of time for those courses and the course credit so that they become semester-long elective studies courses and each earn half credit. A couple of additional options and the things that this, some positive outcomes that can also occur from this is that it would also open up potentially the opportunity for more, more variety of elective courses for students. So, this is, you know, initial consideration. I'll answer questions that you might have around this. In the memo are also the committee members who are suggesting this revision. You'll see two teachers' names on there. Those are the two teachers who teach the courses. So, they're the ones that brought this forth to the curriculum team during the course review. So, I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Sean, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Doug?
No.
Lauren?
No questions.
Patrick?
What's enrollment in these classes right now?
I do not have that with me, but I can get that to Superintendent Merritt to send to you.
Okay, great. And obviously, if you're taking a year-long class to a half-year, you are going to reduce the amount of content that's there, but it seems like you'll still be able to meet the standards that you, that you're trying to meet.
Yes. All standards would still be met with the courses. The, what would happen is that the content would be tighter. So, there would be, it would be better aligned to the standards. And this recommendation, by the way, would take effect for the 2022, 2023 school year and beyond. It wouldn't affect any of the credit for any students that have passed or currently had credit for this course.
Got it. And the honor, or the international relations class will continue to be an honors class?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We discussed this thoroughly in SPA. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I think everybody's done with those questions. So, next up, we have, consider.
Do we go through the world language?
We're going to do that one next.
The next up is consider approval of resolution for world language graduation requirement alignment with Michigan Merit Curriculum Options, first reading.
Yep. In 2014, the Michigan Merit Curriculum offered two potential additional pathways to earn the two credits for world languages. Those two pathways, one of them was one credit of world language and a credit of a career tech ed program. The second pathway was one credit of world language and up to one credit of visual and performing and applied arts, also known as VAPA. We often refer to it as VAPA in the district. So, they did that for a short period of time and did, they did, it wasn't exactly a pilot, but it was similar to a pilot program of doing that. In the fall, in September of 2020, they made this change, a permanent change and a permanent pathway option. So, bringing forth to you right now is the opportunity for our students to have that additional pathway. Currently, PCCS has approved, so the board has approved previously, the first of those two pathways, which is one full credit of world language and one credit of a career or technical education program. But we did not certify the second pathway as an option for students to earn the two credits of world language. So, the request would be to certify the second of those pathways to provide additional options for students to earn the two credits of world languages. And that would be, the second pathway would be one credit of world language and up to one credit of VAPA curriculum, two credit, or one credit of VAPA. And again, this would take effect the 2022, 2023 school year and beyond. So, I'll pause for any questions you might have.
Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah. So, if a student takes a world language in middle school, does that count for one of these credits?
It depends on the course. So, like, we do have some pathways that align.
So, like, I think they're Spanish and I think you, Spanish and French, I think are the two that are generally.
I believe so, but I can confirm that.
Okay. So, if you can just confirm that, just so people can understand how that works. Because I believe that the classes, they're taken at the middle school level or generally high school level classes.
Yes. The courses that align to the high school level courses would provide one of these credits.
Okay, so they would count as a world language credit in this pathway or in the, in the two-credit requirement pathway?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Because they would earn high school credit at that level.
Thank you.
And again, this would fully align us with the Michigan Merit Curriculum as it stands at the present time for world languages.
I feel like I just heard something that there's a discussion on another change?
There's some additional things that they're talking about at the state level, but nothing that has moved forward yet. So.
All right, thank you. All right. So, next up, we are at Finance and Operations with Ms. Piaz. First up, we have an action item, 221226, consider approval of a resolution for CTE technology purchase. I am.
Madam President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution for CTE technology purchase, action item 221226, final reading.
I'm looking for a second. Second. All right. It's been moved by member Kehoe and seconded by members to do that we consider approval of a resolution for the CTE. for the CTE technology purchase file, reading action item 221226. Does anybody have any questions on this?
Just as a reminder, we discussed this extensively both in FNO and at the last meeting.
Alright, so seeing no questions, I will call for the vote. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Alright, passed. The next one is action item 221227, consider approval of resolution to purchase equipment and services using FCC emergency connectivity funds. Final reading. I'm looking for a motion.
Madam President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution to purchase equipment and services using the FCC emergency connectivity funds, action item 221227, final reading.
Second.
Alright, does anybody have any questions on this?
I just want to clarify, there'll be another resolution that'll be coming up after that. We've actually got two opportunities to do purchases through the emergency connectivity funds process. This is the second tranche of equipment that we're able to purchase, and we discussed this both at FNO and again, last week. There'll be one that will be about the first tranche that we'll talk about in two more resolutions.
Right, okay. Yeah, I had to read it more than once to figure out what it was doing in here. Alright, any more questions? I will call for the vote. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Alright. Then next, we have action item 221228, consider approval of a resolution for bid package, high school one site contractor award revision, first and final reading. So I'm looking for a motion.
Madam President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution for bid package HS1 site contractor award revision, first and final reading, action item 221228.
Second.
It's been moved by Member Kehoe and seconded by Member Brooks that we consider approval of resolution for bid package, high school one site contractor award revision, 221228. Since this is a first and final, I think we probably need some discussion on this perhaps.
Okay. On October 26th, the Board of Education awarded a contract as part of bid pick HS1, the Salem High School auditorium addition and renovation under bid division 102 asphalt paving earthwork site utilities. We awarded to Lake Michigan Site Development of Flat Rock, Michigan. Unfortunately, at the cost of $309,000. We received a rescission of that bid due to the cease of operations for this firm. Unfortunately, they are closing their doors as of December 31st. So in that vein, we looked back to the bids. The second lowest bidder was Nagel Paving by Michigan with a bid of $314,990. That differential of $5,990 will be absorbed using the contingency funds that were already set aside during the course of that project. So we're asking you to bid, to agree to the rescission by the vendor and to then award the contract to the second lowest bidder at Nagel Paving.
Alright, does anybody have any questions?
Even though it's a very small dollar amount, this still has to come through because we're canceling the old contract and signing a new. So the total dollar amount of the contract is one that requires board approval, even though the actual difference is relatively small.
We can't really vote no though, to say we're not going to accept if they're going out of business though.
They're out of business. And it's squeezing blood from a rock at this point, so.
Alright, I will call for the vote. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Alright. Now we are at action item 221229, consider approval of resolution to re-award ECF funds for technology equipment, first and final reading. I am looking for a motion.
Madam President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution to re-award ECF funds for technology equipment, first and final reading, action item 221229.
Second.
It's been moved by Member Kehoe and seconded by Member Brooks. Action item 221229, consider approval of resolution to re-award ECF funds for technology equipment. This is a first and final reading. Would somebody like to talk about this?
I'll start and then you can fill in. This is a rescission also. The original award was given to Intecom computers. This is not a, this is not a business succession, but it however, is a supply chain kind of issue where they cannot guarantee the receipt of computers ordered under this award. Their, the FCC emergency connectivity funds have to be spent, received all that by June 30th, 2022. And because they can't guarantee delivery at this time, they've asked to rescind their bid. So again, this has been a rescission of their bid and then an award to People Driven Technologies, Inc. It, because it's on, within the continental United States, they can guarantee the delivery of said computers. So that's what this is all about tonight. Member Kehoe, do you have any other?
Yeah, just to recap, it's, we bought a bunch of HP laptops that we were, thought that we were going to get and, or, I'm sorry, is it Chromebooks? You know, laptops, HP laptops that we thought that we were going to get in time. But these machines not only have to be received, but they have to be installed. So we have to have 1,300 laptops prepared and delivered to our staff throughout by June 30th in order to meet the requirements of the emergency connectivity fund process. And that's, when there was a supply chain challenge there, that's why we made the move to Dell. And Dell actually was very competitive in this. They want more of our business. We do have Dell already installed, as we just saw from the CTE equipment that we're just buying. But they dropped their price substantially in order to meet the terms of this bid. And so we're seeing a very small price increase as part of this process.
Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I have a question about the guaranteed delivery date. Have they given you that or an estimate of that?
If they haven't given a guarantee, they can't.
Mike, come up here.
So they, they're unable to give a guarantee. They've given, Dell has given us reasonable assurance that we should see receipt within six weeks of the placement of the order. So they initially said 30 to 45 days. We received a letter on Friday from Dell that said, we're going to do the best we can. We expect to have delivery within six weeks. So that wasn't included in the packet, but we did receive that, we have that communication. But they, they can't guarantee it. But we've, we talked with Dearborn Public Schools. They had placed orders for the same model and already received theirs. That was from earlier in the fall. So that was another piece of, I guess, some comfort for us.
Right. Okay, that's good to know.
Yeah, and that gives us enough time. There's still plenty of cushion. I mean, they have to be there by June 30th. If we place, that's why we did this first and final. If it takes six weeks, we're, you know, end of January and we have the machines. And even if there's a slight delay on that, we still have plenty of time to get them deployed.
Correct. Yeah, we're going to need to, once we take receipt, we're going to need to put images on them that we have tailored for our district and then do the issuance as was described. And we have 60 days upon receipt to get into staff hands. So we're going to work diligently once that happens.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So 60 days and it has to be done by the end of June.
Correct.
Correct.
Both things have to happen.
That's a lot of work. Thank you.
Yeah, I wish I could help you.
Given the grant that we got for these, this is, this is very worthwhile. That's why we're doing this.
Yeah. Okay, I will call for the vote. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Alright. We are now on to citizens comments. At this current time, I have one paper. You'll have three minutes. Mr. Brandon will start the timer. It is Cara Gavin.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. I'm coming to you today at a time when our community locally, Plymouth Canton, has the highest COVID case rate that we have had through the entire pandemic, according to the dashboard made by Dr. Emily Summers using Wayne County data. We also have the Omicron variant possibly being found in our state now or soon. Our hospitals are full. Our vaccination rate for five through 11-year-olds, though we know it's very exciting, they can get vaccinated, is less than 15% and less than state standard, or state average in Wayne County. And I wanted to thank the leadership of the district to, for scheduling with Wayne County, the vaccination clinic happening on the 15th. I wanted to thank you for the communication, Superintendent Merritt, today about the receipt of rapid tests from Wayne RISA and appreciate their response to my previous public comment. And I am asking all of the board, as you discussed tonight, and the leadership to make sure that as we deploy those tests, we're following the new state quarantine and testing guidance as well as we anticipate CDC will be issuing new guidance on that topic as well in coming weeks and making sure that the district is aware and following those. And on behalf of parents that I'm in communication with, we really want to make sure that there is really adherence to those, to those guidance, that, that families are informed when there's a close contact, that families who have a child who is sick or has been tested positive with no symptoms are reminded again and again to keep those children home, that close contacts who are vaccinated can continue to attend in person, which is so important. We also, my fellow parents and I in talking, feel like there needs to be more transparency around the threshold that the district will use regarding absentee, absenteeism among students and staff for potentially pivoting to virtual temporarily if absenteeism is too high and, and learning is not taking place as well as it could. We absolutely, I for sure, advocate for in-person learning whenever possible, but at some point, there must be a threshold. We'd like to know what that is. We also would like to have more attention to the in-classroom air handling devices, air cleaning devices that were purchased. We've heard reports that they're not being maintained, not being cleaned, not being turned on, and we'd like attention to that. And then we would also like to make sure that in the discussion of how to do more security in our schools, that an emergency alert system involving modern technologies like app alerts and text messaging is considered so that people can have, including students, can have timely information during a situation like Oxford, et cetera. And so again, thank you for the vaccination clinic. Thank you for pursuing the testing and thanks.
Thank you. Did anybody, did anybody else want to make a comment? Alright, we will move on. Next up, we have action items discussion. And up, we have a discussion of COVID-19 mitigation plans. Superintendent Merritt?
Yes, at our, at our last meeting, there was a request to just have a discussion of our COVID-19 mitigation plan. So we just thought that maybe just providing some updates and really just opening the floor for discussion and questions. I wanted to share with, not responding to citizens comments, but with Ms. Gavin just said, it's always two steps forward and another step back. So today, actually, our nurse manager, as we all know, we have been looking into the antigen test program to send home. We followed up, filled out the form back in November, hadn't received. And today, Nurse Williams responded to both of us to say, hey, I actually went over there. I got to pick up 250 tests. Then she called back later and said, they gave the old test that we used through the athletics, which you had to have one region responsible for administering those. So those were, if we were giving those at schools, those can't be the ones that are distributed. So they still have some work to do, I think, to get that piece together. But just to be able to acknowledge that we as a school are receptive and want to be a part and are actively trying to be a part of the program in which we could have home tests that we could distribute to our families. So we'll provide an update. She'll look into, to see if those can be switched out, to see what happened with, with our distribution on that. Just in terms of what we just heard is absolutely correct in terms of our consistent high level of spread within our community. We definitely saw a pronounced increase in cases in November, and that has continued on through December, especially around Halloween. Most of our cases are tied to student-to-student exposure outside of schools. We are monitoring EpiLink cases here in the district, more so than we did last school year. Potentially maybe the Delta variant as reasons for these EpiLink cases. Also, it, I will say a frustration is that basically, even though it's a recommendation all around, there's no requirement for masking. So many of our students, as I said, are engaging outside of school and various components. And if they are still in school, for example, and eating together, and that's a time when they are unmasked and eating. They have also had a common shared exposure outside of school. If they also are in school, we have to count that as a school EpiLink. So for example, I think we had four, four cases that were connected in Pioneer around Halloween that resulted in, we actually moved that school to, we paused in-person learning for the sixth grade. So it's still monitoring those, as I said, more of an increase. That, that question around what is that threshold, we determined through our metrics committee last year, and we've continued that consistently this year. What is the threshold that could either be disruptive to learning? And we say greater than 50 in a classroom. So if greater than 50% of students are quarantined or out for COVID, then we consider as a case-by-case, it triggers a case review. So we have a conversation around the potential to move that classroom to in-person learning. We look at a school level and we use that 75% attendance rule. As you know, throughout the district, we have a, no flexibility in those hours and minutes. And so if we have 75% or less than 75, am I saying this word right? 75%, we have to have in school in order to count the day. So we've used that as a threshold. When we look to elementary, it's kind of easy to determine because it's a classroom, that 50%. When you look at secondary, the kids are in six different classes. So at Pioneer, for example, we are looking at that as a grade level, not a particular class, but again, triggers that case review. Does it become disruptive to the continuity of learning? We are in a much better place in terms of quarantines this year because of the support that we have and our teachers are working to, so two things. With vaccination status, we're not required to quarantine as many students as we did last year, although we do have high levels of cases. So that's positive. If we have to quarantine students, we have supports that are in place that allows them to work with their teachers to either livestream within the classroom or have access to pre-recorded lessons. So that has helped with that continuity somewhat. When we look at our quarantines, consistent with September and October, about 50% of positive and probable cases resulted in no close contact quarantines. Quarantine counts have been low for the last week in November, and that's as of not being in school, but looking again. Right now, in total, I just have the numbers for November. 433 students were quarantined in November. At least 225 were related to contact with family members or friends outside of school. At least 85 were related to unmasked lunch exposure. At least 86 were related to not being distanced at least three feet while in school. And so again, when we look at our athletics cases, we had 17 athletic cases testing positive and 26 students having to quarantine as a result of that. Still trying to work to support. We did our mitigation plans at the start of the school year. So they have, I think we published the last addition to that was August the 27th, looking at what we do in all levels of community spread and then specifically what we do in high levels of spread. So continuing to support that. We are allowing for field trips, but we have mitigation plans that are in place when our students go. So even if it's not required, for example, for masking in their location, we take our school requirements or mitigation plans with them. Still masking and under the public health order for masking at schools with Wayne County Health Department. That is supposed to remain in effect until we are in moderate for 14 consecutive days. So at this point, we haven't had any indication that that public health order would be lifted. So we're continuing to follow that. In terms of our visitors, we are at high levels of spread. It has to be visitors by appointment. So we need to know, not drop-ins, we need to know that when people are coming. We have our regular volunteers that are still allowed within the classroom. At times, you might find through schools that they minimize the number of regular volunteers just because of the spacing issue. We may have some classrooms that are just smaller and they're trying to maximize the number of space within the classroom. But we still have that ability to allow for those regular volunteers and then visitors. They just need to have notification, making sure that we're still participating in the daily screening for our students and for our staff. Very important that if someone is feeling ill, for them to stay home and just on our end, trying to support that it's okay and you're not going to fall behind. That's been a challenge, as we know, throughout the year, where students in particular feel like they're going to be behind. So they might try to push through and get to school, but it's so important not to. So still, again, as we continue to talk about our cleaning challenges, that is still a struggle, but we're making sure that we're ensuring the high touchpoint cleans. We've done, in addition to the struggles with trying to onboard our full set of custodial staff members, our ABM partners, as well as our own cleaning assistants. We've offered an additional stipend to just have our own staff outside of the regular work hours if they want to volunteer for that additional. if they want to volunteer for that additional stipend to just ensure that we're getting those touchpoints cleaned and wiped down. So that's how we've been moving forward in that arena. The MIRF-13 filters are still changed on a regular basis. Did hear, this is my first time hearing today about the potential of maybe the air purifiers not being turned on. So that is something that we can look to follow. But that's still the expectation, especially in this high level of spread. All filters are changed regularly, and the expectation is that those are on. If there is some indication that they are not working correctly, then filling out the appropriate form to get that adjusted. We still actually have some on, on hand if we needed to switch the actual machine out as well. There's not the supply issue. So with that, I just kind of wanted to hear questions, discussions, and kind of just talk through whatever you have in, in mind in terms of what's going on right now.
Sean?
Yeah, I'll defer for now.
Doug?
Yeah, I was kind of wondering, what are some of the mitigation types of safeties that we did last year that we're not doing this year, other than changing the distance between from six feet to three feet? And that, like with partitions and Plexiglas and all that, have we do? Because I've seen this out in the industry, that they're, they're removing. Every, every week, I see a little bit less of, of that. I was just wondering if there is any of that in the school? Or are we just tight in what we've been doing for the last two, year, year and a half now?
We've pretty much been consistent with our mitigation plans. We favored more of the air purifiers and opening windows outside than the barriers. We did have barriers that were requested from some teachers or maybe if there is a one-on-one situation with speech therapy or something along those lines. And so if somebody still wants that in place, we still have that. But in, in general, that is not used within our classroom settings, just continuing on the mitigation strategies that have been in effect since the start of the pandemic.
Thanks.
Lauren?
Yeah, I, I have a question about parent volunteers and cleaning practices. I know we've heard some, you know, some emails or had some emails in our inboxes and some parents on social media saying, how can we support our teachers that are already, you know, kind of stretched so thin? And I, I'm wondering if this is, you know, something that we would embrace, having parent volunteers support teachers in cleaning practices? If they, if they're not able to, you know, take that stipend in a scheduled way?
And so we, we've talked about that, and definitely in terms of a mitigation piece, the willingness to work with, and, and it is kind of individualized again. So if you're in a classroom that's already so small, and we're just, we're trying to maintain the three feet to the greatest extent possible and six feet from the adult because we, and so there could be a classroom where that, that limits that. We could have other classrooms where we may only have 17 kids right now. And so that's something that could be worked at more easily. We've actually just, so we welcome, yes. We want to encourage, I mean, we're willing to even pay if that would be even more of an incentive. We're also looking not just inside the building, but as we have more students and drop-off because of transportation. So if parents are there anyway and, and are willing to volunteer to assist with arrival and dismissal times, that is encouraged. So it just would encourage any parents that are interested to just talk directly to the building principals and depending on just what potentially. So if we say overall as a district, yes, we are welcoming and supportive of that, but mitigation screening and all of that would need to be followed and also making sure that spacing is something right now, especially in high levels of spread, that we're, we're mindful of.
Okay, thank you. Patrick?
Work as well.
So my question has to do with the, the athletics. Last week, we relaxed the criteria that we had for masking with respect to athletics. And as I know that you, I've sent an email, a detailed set of questions, and I recognize that last week was a very difficult week for, for everybody in education. So I haven't had responses to those questions. Do you have answers to those questions? Specifically, you, you clarified in, in an email to the board about volleyball not being included, but there's no information about hockey or basketball in that process. And, you know, hockey was not at all included in the MHSA guidelines for relaxation. And I don't know why we're relaxing the guidelines for hockey.
So I can talk through some of those this evening. When we look at the overall process, if we think back to our mitigation plans, we have just shared that we will follow the MHSA guidelines as it relates to athletics. So November 3rd, I want to say, is the date that they issued their winter guidance on masking. They've done quite a few studies on certain sports that it could be a hazard to wear a mask when actively competing. So those that have been called out are competitive cheer, wrestling, basketball, swimming. Did I miss one?
Gymnastics.
Gymnastics. With that, the guidance from MHSA is also to work with your local health department. So you think about the different entities that are involved in really some say as it relates to safe sports and, and in-person learning. So we then recognizing that we have a public health order in Wayne County. When you look at MHSA, then that's state guidelines, and things are going to be different in different regions. We're under a public health order. So we, as superintendents, reached out to Wayne County Health Department to say, these are the guidelines that we are following. Is this allowable as it relates to the public health order to remove masks only when actively competing? So students are still required to wear masks if they're on the bench, spectators, coaches, only if actively participating. And the idea behind that is within these sports, it's not 15 cumulative minutes when they're less than six feet apart. Looking at various choking hazard, for example, if you're wrestling or the danger that could be involved in gymnastics. If the mask were to go up and child is on the, the beam or, you know, swimming if it's wet. And so that really, looking with the health department, then their response was yes, it is allowable to follow the MHSA guidelines as it relates to this public health order, but at all times, still remain masked when you're not directly competing. The American Pediatrics weighs in on four of those five. They do not call out specifically basketball on that. But again, the MDHHS supports the MHSSA and their studies around, which included the basketball. The piece that wasn't called out was the hockey. So in conversations with the Michigan High School Athletic Association, their response for the why that wasn't included in their guidelines was because of all of these others. They worked with, doing studies around the why, and the hockey, they hadn't done a formalized study. The situation in hockey, though, if you know how our students are athletes, they have the helmets on, they have the gloves on. And so if there is a situation where they're out there on the ice and potentially are ready, coming for, like if mask goes up, they can't even get to their mask in order to, to move it down. And so we did ask for that information to come from the MHSSA. And so they shared that with us. We shared that with the Wayne County Health Department. Because for us, we're still saying, what deems, and that's where you're working with your local health department, what, what is a sport that deems a potential to be unsafe? And so talking through that piece is really how we arrived at hockey. Volleyball didn't show up in any American Academy of Pediatrics. Our issue was more of a mistake, I will say here, because hockey is not a winter sport. When we look at MHSA, that really governs high school athletic.
Volleyball.
Volleyball. What did I just say?
You said volleyball.
I'm sorry. Volleyball. Governs high school, and we, for consistency, utilize our middle schools as well. Volleyball is not a winter sport, but here in our middle schools, we had an overlap of the season. So there's about two weeks left in, from the fall. And so when we went forward with the winter guidelines, the middle school took on those guidelines as well. So we were able to correct that. That was supposed to go into effect on the 29th and immediately to say, keep masks on. So our volleyball middle school students are continuing to be mastering direct competition. I don't know if the, the season is over now. It was two weeks left in the season. It might be the final week. So now back into the, those sports as identified within the MHSSA guidelines is what the, what we are, are following here in our district.
So I guess my, my struggle with this is that we say that we're following these guidelines, and yet we added another sport, and it's clearly not in their guidelines. Hockey is not in their guidelines. We're at the largest number of cases that we have in our community right now. The number of cases that we have in our district is close to what we had in the spring. In a situation where we've got a huge number of cases at this time, and we're relaxing our protocols instead of strengthening them. And the CDC, when they provide guidelines on this, they say, if you're doing these kinds of sports, they first say, don't do them when you're in high and substantial spread. Don't have those sports at all. But they do say that if you're going to do those things, there's a number of steps that you can take to mitigate around that with respect to testing and with respect to, to vaccination and other things. And I don't see us putting any of those requirements in this process while we've relaxed other things. This seems like a huge window that we've opened. Now granted, it's for a small population, but hockey was our number one offender last year in terms of spread. And I, I don't understand why we're, why we're doing this. It just does not make any sense to me. It is not in the MHSA guidelines. It is not in any of the documents, and we say we're following this.
So I will share that. It's not a blanket statement in terms of hockey being our number one area of spread last year. We did have an outbreak in, in a hockey situation, but that wasn't our number one area of spread. And when, when you look at, that is fair when you say CDC. But as I share, we look at all areas. It's not just the CDC. So CDC really is looking nationally. And then all of those other entities, when you work with your local health department, the state health department, the American Academy of Pediatrics. And so looking at all of these, and our most, the closest is working with our Wayne County Health Department in terms of that guidance. Again, we're not doctors. And so when we say what, what deems something that could be dangerous during that active play? And when you risk weigh what could potentially be a threat to student safety when they're actively competing versus a threat to SARS is really that threshold where the, the medical professionals are wearing it. And so for that, again, when we look to the active participation only, so if you're on, while on the court, while in the pool, while on the balance beam, while competing, soon as you get back to your seat, masks are up. If you're not actively participating, masks are up. It, as it always has been, is about the data, and so actively monitoring what is going on in these situations. I would say unlike last year, again, looking at the vaccination rate, I will say we've seen, as you're following the data around athletics, quite a bit of difference from what we were experienced last, experiencing last year. More of our students have been vaccinated. And again, looking at just more intentional, when you ask of the, the different mitigation layers, trying to be more aware of even spacing and things along those lines. Of course, when you're actively participating, the game is the game. But looking at even that 15, not even consecutive minutes, but cumulative minutes while playing is also something that is accounted for in various sports.
I, I just struggle with this, Monica. In the note that you sent us, it says about volleyball. You said, "We heard back from the Wayne County Health Department concerning our inquiry, and they've indicated that they're leaving mask decisions during athletics up to the local school districts." You further went on to say, "Our mitigation plans indicate that we'll follow the MHSA guidelines for sports at all levels of transmission." That's how you, you justified not having volleyball included. But what's the justification for us including hockey? It's not in their guidelines.
So I share the justification. Where you're reading is my response from Wayne County Health Department as it relates to the public health order. And so that direction to say that that is working, the MDHHS advises through these guidelines to work with your local health department. So reaching out to the whole health department, to us, for us, we actually sent all of the list of the sports, and we're saying, these are the ones that are not included here. We need to know what is that threshold, and how do you determine what is dangerous as you being the medical professionals? And so responding to that, saying this is allowable within, and that is that local decision. We still kind of tried to go back and forth with, the hockey in particular, volleyball wasn't. We weren't, we didn't try to, to follow through on that. But the hockey, because of our own lived experiences with our students, and again, remember last school year, still under the same situation where our students could not get to. So if, if they're participating and the mask goes up, they, they have, what do they call cages on their face? And their gloves, their mitts, they can't get to that. And so if they're colliding within another student, then we're looking at that danger right there. Even when we looked at the situations with hockey, I think that those occurrences that we had on the last school year was more a locker room type of scenario. So when you think about the hockey match itself, they're not six feet for consecutive or cumulative minutes of 15, but kind of the locker room interaction and really outside of school, again, jumping in the car together. And, and, and so really focusing as a team on some of those additional mitigation factors outside of the sport itself, and locker room and things along those lines, has been the additional layer of mitigation that's in play. Again, we, talking to all of the schools in the KLA, and again, with hockey in particular, going back to MHSA, and specifically because there was not a study done on hockey is the reason that that wasn't named. But affirming that it's the same concerns with the other sports that are listed in terms of that potential for a dangerous behavior while wearing mask in, in, in direct competition. When we look at even our outbreak cases, they haven't been among those sports right now. I think we had one on the list right now for dance team. And probably just because of the nature of that contact that's involved, and those kids are actually masked during this. So in these particular sports, we have not had at this point a situation that is an EpiLink or outbreak. We'll continue to monitor that, and if we need to adjust our mitigations, again, having to weigh the danger of this competitive sport with masking and exposure to SARS is, is really where that conversation continues to be with our health department.
Okay. So as I understand it, what you've said is, is that we look to the MHSA guidelines, but then we make the decisions based upon what we've, what we believe is the right thing to do for, with respect to safety. And so it, it doesn't, we're not using the MHSA guidelines. We've added hockey into this because the administration, based upon their, their experience of the hockey sport, believes that this is the same dangers. And so that's why you've included this. It doesn't, it's not, it's not in the guidelines. It's not in their recommendations. There's no data to support it. It's entirely an administrative decision.
Well, I, I, yes, I will say it is an administrative decision based on conversations with MHSSA. I actually asked for them because it was not put in their guidelines for that, for that to come to writing, in writing to us, and then working then. We shared that again with our Wayne County Health Department, recognizing once again, we are not, the doctors are the healthcare experts, and trying to really work to determine, you know, what is that, how do you determine? What are you doing as a medical expert to determine that this is dangerous? So we can share what is happening with our actual students and some dangerous situations that our students have been in, in this particular sport. And again, that's where, where you read my response to you from there. And so that is where we are. So we, we, you know, worked again. This is the collective work, as working with our local health department, working again with MHSA, and having the rationale for why they didn't include that in the winter sports is only because of the fact that it's a study that was not done. All of these other sports that they've carved out have had studies, and at that time, they did not have the studies on there. Again, if we see that we're having situations where we're EpiLinked or outbreaks are associated with the students, and that's the only association is them during the hockey, if they're, you know, if they're on the bench or they're still going to be masked up, if that's the only association, then that's something that we need to review and adjust as we always would.
I know that we don't break this out in our reporting, both either privately or publicly. Can you make sure that you take that as an action and provide that feedback to the board in the event that that does happen?
Absolutely.
I have other questions, but I'll let others answer. Ask theirs.
You're only specifically meaning hockey?
Any of the sports that we have unmasked.
And I want to again emphasize, unmasked during direct competition, active competition, not during.
So towards that end, if, when we look at competitive cheer, the specific work that they set on competitive cheer was when you were doing tumbling and stunts. It was not for non, non-physical activities. Is, is that the way we've implemented that rule?
Yes. So if you think about even with cheerleading, and we've had, we had some incidents last year. I think on cheer team or was that just dancing? Do we have? Okay, maybe pop. I, just the, the nature of, of where they're not actively participating, where maybe they're congregating a little bit closely. And so definitely just trying to keep that really, really tight and follow. And so definitely just trying to keep that really, really tight and follow that guideline on when that would be allowable for. And I do want to emphasize that it's not required. So at any time, a student is always permitted to keep their mask on. That's just us from a school perspective, allowing that exemption during that active play. But if they want to keep their mask on, by all means, they can choose to keep their mask on.
Okay.
So is it only when they're on the mat, basically?
Yeah.
And then anytime that they're off the mat, they're masked?
Yeah. So if I'm up for my mat, I'm wrestling, I have that ability to come down. If I'm off the mat, even if I'm hanging around the sideline, I'm not actively wrestling my, I don't know the right words. The wrestling my partner is the word I'm going to say. Opponent, then yes, I have to be masked.
I was raising a football hat. My dad still wouldn't be impressed with me right now.
Thanks for that laugh.
Anupam? Yeah, two things. One is I want to pick up on member Christiansen's comment about having parents as volunteers. We've seen that from last year, continuing to this year, and I'm not sure how many people are going to be watching this board meeting to hear the comment that you just made Superintendent Merritt. So I wonder if there's a way to send out some email or some communication to families to say, here's a way that you can get involved, talk to your building principal or, you know, click on this link, whatever it may be, but just blasting out that message to our community to say, we need your help and if you have time, please come in. And so my second question is around the distancing and the numbers. So when I look at the numbers of the elementary close contacts, they're double, triple from where we were in the spring and last year. So wondering what are the changes in distance in the classroom where minimally three feet and lunch six feet? Has that changed where we're seeing an increase in these numbers?
The majority of our exposures at the elementary level, or really in the classroom levels, are occurring in the eating, in the cafeteria area. So there are the majority, when we look at the three feet, we don't have six feet in our eating spaces. If you recall, last year, we had our lunches that were, you know, starting at nine o'clock and going all the way up until two o'clock. And so they've tried to condense those and still maximize space. When we look at like middle school, for example, rotating so that you have half the kids that are in while others are out within the lunchroom, because they're not six feet, using, you know, take a bite, put your mask back on, just other layered mitigation strategies to try to help mitigate that. But if we are in a scenario, especially the young people that may take a little bit longer with eating and they're greater than 15 minutes, that's where we're seeing some of our situations. We've had some scenarios with younger students as well, I think within our preschool program. Sometimes just the nature of some of our center-based programs that we may have had some exposure there as well. But for the most part, again, the difficulty and I think the frustration you'll hear from many of our nurses is that there's an expectation in schools that's nowhere else. And so many of our students, even when we do this contact tracing, we know that there is a shared exposure, there's sleepovers, there's parties, there's all things, they're riding together. But as long as they have also been together, so if we even know of the situation that has occurred outside of school, but the same friends are eating together at lunch and they're unmasked during that time, we still have to count that as a school exposure. So those are some of the cases that we're dealing with. Our nurses and around the county are actually in conversation. If you even recognize that contact tracing itself is the responsibility of the health department and philosophically, we as a district have really tried to take that on to just work to keep our schools safe and open for in-person learning. It does at times become unmanageable when we're dealing with all of these outside factors that we still have to work through. And so they're also having some conversations around that as well. We do have, I want to say, there's a, you know, we staffed intentionally for smaller class sizes within our classrooms to try to ensure that three feet. We had that situation within, I want to say Pioneer where, you know, we think about, if we're already there last year, then how are we here this year with less students? We had some furniture that was moved around. Remember, we had purchased some individual desks last year because the high school wasn't, when the high school wasn't in, so we'd taken some of that furniture and put it at Pioneer. So that had been shifted around. So we were able to make some accomplishments to some of the facilities within there to stretch that out a little bit more because some of those tables were a little closer together. So still working to try to ensure the greatest space to the greatest extent possible. But again, when you're seeing the quarantines, oftentimes we're coming across situations that occur in a lunchroom when unmasked or in a classroom if the activity has allowed that to be greater than 15 minutes, less than, greater than 15 minutes.
Greater than 15, okay. So as we approach the holidays, are you and your team giving consideration to a spike in these cases after the holidays and are you putting in additional measures to minimize the spread or to contain it?
So definitely, we have not implemented anything new at this point, but definitely conversations again with our nursing staff and team in anticipation. Same thing as we anticipated and it was the reality when we looked around Halloween and the expectation. Of course, we saw that spike when we came back. We didn't see that as much, I believe, at the Thanksgiving as we anticipated that we would, but really still preparing for keeping those mitigation plans going. But we'll continue those conversations as well.
All right, thank you.
I don't really have any questions right now. Thinking of something, I'm thinking about how to phrase it. Sean, do you have anything?
Just a couple of clarifying questions. So one, so we, did we move last year from three feet, six feet? I mean, from a eating standpoint?
Yeah. Going back to last year, it was the recommendation from CDC, MDHHS was looking for the six feet as a recommendation. We did require it here in our district.
Correct.
Really with the push on trying to get back to in-person learning, you know, all these different entities said in schools, three feet would be allowable. So the rules shifted from a recommend it to three feet is allowable. So even when we look at our quarantine protocols within our school settings, our classroom environments, three feet is utilized as opposed to the six feet for schools only.
Got you, okay. And then to earlier question about coming back from the break, are we prepared for 100% virtual? If we come back, cases spike through the roof, are we ready to go with 100% virtual at this time?
That is a great question. We are much more prepared at the secondary level. So when you look, for example, at the high school, just under this particular situation on Thursday, under the threat situation and we felt we needed to move or pivot to remote, we were able to do that. And I do want to emphasize when I say easily because of access to devices, it's not easy for teachers. So that does take time to prepare your Zoom links. It's a lot of work, but yes, we're able. I think probably even the strongest area in terms of our, I'm going to say ownership of devices, what word am I looking for? Deployment of devices? Is our middle school. So the number of people that are participating in our program. So when we really look at six to 12, that would be easier to transition. When we're looking and really doing that work right now at our elementary school level, it looks like it might be one to two days for us to pivot to a remote setting. And that's, I think, will get better as we take ownership of some of these devices. We look at our young people, they're still with their devices on carts as opposed to taking them home. Is that K through three?
At K five level. So we have, we have many more families that are involved in the one-to-one technology initiative than were previously. So we're well better poised than we were when we moved into a remote environment before, but it would take us a couple of days to deploy devices to all elementary families. So many of them already have devices, but what we would do would be harvest the rest of the devices from carts, deploy and do what's called swarming to the buildings, you know, maximize staff to be able to deploy the devices. So it would take us a couple of days.
Does it make sense to?
I was going to say, when we look at, right now, our kind of the case-by-case basis, we're able to quickly do like a classroom or even a grade level at that elementary. But when we look, if we were to say like this entire school is going to be shut down, then more than likely be able to send kids home with some paper and then be ready in one to two days to get that going.
Does it make sense to do a pilot, a dry run to get some of the kinks worked out so that we could cut down that time and pivot quicker?
Yeah. One of the challenges is also tracking of the devices. So, you know, staff, we have to have staff to deploy them and that's the biggest challenge. So if we were, we can move a school within a day. It's looking at all schools at the elementary level, it would take a couple of days. So, which is still a pretty quick turnaround when you think about the timing of the number of young people we have in our elementaries. So a couple of days with instruction, you're not seeing that significant of a learning loss. We also have to have time for our teachers to prepare. One of the things that we've done in advance of preparation for that is continuously, you know, asked our teachers to keep their Canvas pages updated. You know, as we've looked at some of the mitigation factors that were put in place to provide continuity of learning for students who are quarantined this year, a lot of those strategies have been practiced by our instructional staff and stuff, but it still takes some time. We're well better poised than we were previously. Our teachers also have access to all of the materials that they used last year in the virtual, you know, in the virtual environment. We also have access to tools that we use in the Virtual Academy. So, you know, it would never be an easy shift because of course, we're, you know, we're shifting 16,000 plus students to a virtual environment, but we, I can say with confidence that we are in a much better place to be able to pivot more quickly now than we were when the pandemic first hit us.
Yeah, it sounds like there's an opportunity to, you know, look at all of those different components and put some systems in place to be able to pivot quickly, right? So I love what you're doing around Canvas and making sure that they're keeping those pages updated. Is there like gap curriculum that they just know they're ready to go so that there is no disruption in learning with the students even over those, that two-day time period? So I would just encourage the administration to think through that if possible, you know, how do we put as much in place now so that that transition is smoother? Even from a communication standpoint, you know, what can we put in place now to make it easier on the parents to pivot? And just thinking back there, a lot of the heartburn that was felt last year. I know we're in a much better place, I recognize that, but I also feel, unfortunately, I feel like it may be inevitable that we move to 100% virtual next year. And so being ready for that, I think would be, you know, a prudent thing to do. And then lastly, my question is just on recognizing that from a decision-making standpoint, unmask, wearing, relaxing, you know, mandates, that's an administrative decision, that's your decision. But I guess my question is, you know, why was the decision made not to? This conversation was a great conversation. It was very informed, you know, informed me a lot of, it was fantastic. Why wasn't that conversation had upfront for one? Or at two, some kind of communication prior to the, to the sports mask mandate being relaxed?
Yeah. Like I shared with you all, I think that was just a disconnect between where I saw, if you remember early on, we actually had our own plans around if we're at low, medium, high as it relates to sports. And we were really, really strict on what we would do for sports. And then we worked towards, I think that was around August 5th, and then we moved towards the decision to just follow the MHSAA guidelines. And so that and our mitigation plans on August the 27th was where we ended. And so we had that conversation, you know, here as a full team to say that we were following those. So for me, that wasn't. Now that, then being that operational thing, I didn't even think, you know, I'm doing the due diligence around the calls, our APAs, working with our superintendents, but that wouldn't, you know, looking forward, I definitely, that something like that would communicate that out. So that was only as I shared with you, a disconnect. I haven't seen that as being a change, that's just continuing to follow the guidelines as they were issued.
Okay. Yeah, that would be my request is anytime we move within that grid, that, you know, those guidelines that we mentioned, if the board can, you know, be communicated with just so that as we start to get questions from the community, we're not blindsided as well.
Absolutely. You got my commitment for that. Thank you.
Doug?
Like you, I'm trying to formulate my questions and I haven't finished that yet. I was just wanted to make sure that we do what it takes to mitigate it because with all the variants or the two variants right now that are out there, it's probably going to get worse next year. So we need to prepare.
Lauren?
No questions.
Patrick?
So my question is really around, how do we keep kids in school? And, you know, we are, we can't necessarily control what's happening in the community. We don't have the authority to be able to do that, but we can control what we do with respect to the mitigations and the programs that we have in the district. And, you know, when we were doing our budget planning for this, for this school year, we budgeted to be able to have three foot in every classroom and six foot at every lunch. And I know that we backed off on that, but it's where we're seeing a substantial number of our quarantines that are happening at the elementary level. And so my first question would be, what can we do to address that problem? And then the second question is really on the nature of the quarantines and the safety of the students. So much of that is impacted by the availability of vaccines. And I know that we're holding this vaccination clinic to make it available, but I don't see us necessarily promoting and explaining to people that vaccines are the most effective way that they can protect themselves. It's better than masks, it's better than social distancing, it is the key component to be able to help prevent the spread in schools. And I think that if we promote that and we link the vaccines to the social distance, I'm sorry, to the quarantine process, we might be able to help address some of those concerns that we see on quarantines right now. And I know that this is not something that we can update at the student level at this point, but I think that we can be an advocate for that in trying to keep our kids in school and safe in this process. So, I'm sorry, there was a question. There's, do we, there's two questions there. First was, what can we do to increase the distancing at lunch? The second question is, can we become advocates for vaccination and actually use that in our messaging and our communications and our promotion?
Definitely still, we are still engaging in those conversations and trying to really tighten up having masks on. You know, it's about the minutes as well in there. It truly was such a disruption to the learning environment to spread out lunches across the entire day and students weren't able to have specials. So we have to weigh that. It's that balance of the instructional program and the safety that is there. So within that current lunch structure, how can we continue to work with our young people to ensure that we are as safe as possible in that space? And again, this is the piece that I say anecdotally, even though we have to see the numbers and we have to report them, what we know on a lot of these cases is friends are together all the time. But, and that's where our conversations right now, our nurses are with the health department because here we have to still report that and it, but we also know that there's a shared exposure outside of school, but because they've been at school and are eating lunch together, we still have to count that. So it's not a situation where we're seeing such a high spike because we now have moved to less than six feet within that classroom. I think we're seeing the consistency around some of the investigations in terms of what could be occurring. But I think what we can do on our part is just continue to try to work on some of those plans. More, I'll say more successful at the secondary, so we're still utilizing the spaces. I will say again, thank you for the tables. The high school kids, as cold as it is, they're still eating outside. So I think that that will continue hopefully post-pandemic. It's just a great, you know, space and kids are eating in different areas, which is really good and they're really kind of honoring that space. Our little people are just, they like, you know, it's a constant kind of trying to keep them following the rules. But the staff is there to do it and we'll continue on that as well.
So with respect to the spacing at the lunches, you know, a number of our schools, we have separate lunchrooms and cafeterias, I'm sorry, cafeterias and gyms. And we just added new space at three of the elementary schools. Are we utilizing those gyms for lunch?
Not yet, not, the new spaces are not ready to go. Also, in terms of some of the classes are actually taking place. Remember last year, that's when I said the instructional program, we were...
we, um, were doing away with, I think, some elective courses in order to accommodate this different lunch style. And so getting back on schedule with that so that those spaces are used and also a staffing scenario of just being able to supervise a, a lunch type of, uh, scenario in separate spaces. We're still offering, I, you know, it, it works a little bit better also at, at secondary. You know, teachers additional stipends and they're having smaller groups of kids within their classrooms. So, really trying to be creative on how we space out students. Um, and I think that there are, are there any elementary areas at this point? I don't think we have elementary areas that are using secondary spaces just because.
Yeah, and just look at the number of, we have three hu- in our last full week of school, we had three hundred and twenty-four elementary kids out in quarantine. I mean, that's a lot. I mean, that is a substantial percentage of our elementary students. So, it, you know, finding ways to be able to address the spacing, because I think lunch in that unmasked period is one of our, our, our biggest culprits. So being able to address that, that would be super helpful for us as we have potentially even more contagious variants coming in.
Yes, yes, for sure.
So, my second question was about the promotion of vaccines.
And so that's something we can, uh, take back and talk to our team. I know, um, I, you know, I, I definitely believe that we promote as we're doing the, the clinic and in conversations around, but you know, or there's some more strategic ways that we can get information or, or data out, you know, that definitely would be helpful. And, and, you know, we can take that back and talk about ways to continue to promote.
Okay, thank you.
Can I jump in along those lines? Can we mention the date of the, the vaccine clinic?
The vaccine clinic is Wednesday, December the fifteenth, from three o'clock to seven o'clock PM at the Canton Little Theater. The registration link is on our website. That's right, uh, will you put your hand up? I was like, yeah. Yes, the idea that we're trying to just get a pre-registration just to ensure that we have enough, um, vaccines available. So this, we are able to accommodate first vaccination doses, also booster shots. It doesn't have to be a PCCS student or staff, it's still a community support. So getting that information out, and I know that many members of our community have also added that to different websites, which is really, really good. So, um, looking forward to a, a, a high turnout. And again, we stand ready for, to host any clinic that may be available. I know that they kind of put that information at the same time. Most schools in Wayne County say yes, um, and then they come around again another time. So we'll continue to partner and offer those. I think it's convenient for many, many families.
Is there, is there any kind of signage that we can put up around schools that promote vaccina- vaccines? And that, that we can, without becoming too corny, you know?
I'll take corny, I don't care.
Definitely something that we can take back to our team and talk about. We do have, you know, if we have some visuals or some things, we can communicate.
Or even, even like, like a video, like played of somebody talking, you know, like Dr. Fauci or something, uh, talking about the importance of it. And that, you know, just to get it in their mind that what they see, because they may not see this stuff at home, they, you know, or anywhere else, you know?
I will, um, also share as we, we talk about vaccination, um, in terms of, uh, I think we talked at maybe the last meeting about, uh, the, um, OSHA requirement and, and where we are. And we know that there currently is a stay on the, the requirement to, um, have vaccinations for employees over a hundred, employees with over a hundred employees. Um, but still, while this stay is in place, um, all school districts have been encouraged to ready themselves in the event that the stay is lifted. So I do want to thank, uh, Dr. Vortanian Gibbs, Mr. Tiskowitz, um, and the Human Resources Department have really worked to, um, begin readying our staff for that. And so, information went out to full staff just explaining, uh, w- last Friday. And then today an FAQ went out, um, so we are going to begin the process of collecting, uh, vaccination, um, information in a system that is secured here at school, uh, and, I mean, the Human Resources Office. Um, we have administrative guidelines that are all ready to go, that, uh, we've worked on in consultation with our legal department. That would be, um, uh, uh, the policy around that this would be required in the event that the stay is lifted so that we wouldn't have to, you know, at this point, none of the deadlines are in effect, but we'll have our own, um, deadlines to try to work to get, um, us onboarded. So in the event that it is lifted, we are, are ready to go. Did I say all of that? Anything else to share about that?
I talked with Dr. Vortanian Gibbs earlier and that would apply to members of the board. So, you also got that email.
Okay.
Were you done?
I'm sorry, yes, I was. Yeah, I asked my two questions.
Okay.
No additional questions.
So, I had a, I had a, a question around, like, the sports. So, I've had some people, like, anecdotally say that there's not a lot of compliance among spectators. Um, and, I mean, you can't really put it on coaches who are busy with the children. But what is, what is the recourse for specta- like, like, is there a recourse for them? Because a lot of people are not going to, are conflict adverse and they're not gonna say to somebody, hey, you need to put that mask on.
Well, we do, um, our APAs, um, staff are kind of the next layer of oversight at various events. Um, and holding people accountable to the expectation and asking and, and requiring and the information. Um, we've even had situations where people have reported that to us if maybe an APA wasn't there. And so they're able to then circle back and, and to try to do that accountability piece. And it is definitely, um, I mean, it's, it's, it's a daily practice, of course, as we see even sometimes in our own, own meetings here. But just, um, the expectation is there. Uh, it is definitely helpful that we're still under the public health order, uh, because that gives us really more teeth and the ability to enforce and, and, um, and compliance while in our buildings.
Is, is that announced before each of the sports, you know, I mean?
I, I, I don't know the answer to that. I know that it is understood, um, here.
It's not understood if people aren't doing it. Because if you make the announcement and then you have the announcer pause.
So I would disagree that it's, it, it, when people aren't doing it, it's understood. Sometimes people still do what they want to do and they have to be, uh, corrected. But, um, I think it is generally understood in Wayne County that there's a, a mask mandate while you're in schools. And human nature will have people test you, I, I, you know, all the time. And if they get away with it, you're gonna see more people not. And if they're held accountable, you're gonna see more compliance. We haven't had situations where people are fighting us or, early on, early on in, in the school year, we had a few challenges, I'll say that. Um, and we were able to work, um, really, you know, with our even law enforcement partners and having good conversations around expectations and that's really settled down a lot. Uh, so we would continue to say, you know, if we're not catching something, if you're hearing something, let us know. And our staff is definitely poised to, to hold people accountable to the expectation that's in place. And that hasn't been, um, that hasn't been one of our greatest challenges right now, compliance. I think, well, that's just, let's go.
So, with respect to compliance, are we seeing strong compliance at the school level?
Oh, absolutely. So for, um, any situation where I talked about our increase in EpiLinks, so all of this is reported to the health department. And if there, so when we have, you know, a situation, if there's multiple cases, then they will do a pop-in, um, check-in. It's, uh, uh, the health department comes and really does an audit of your mitigation plans. We don't know that they're coming, they show up. And so, um, each time that that has occurred, we always get, uh, uh, clean, our kids are doing, our staff is doing. When they come through, we are following the mitigation plans as, um, prescribed. And, you know, as, kids are even, like, we talked about early on, if masks are down, you're able to just kind of do symbols and, and we're not seeing that resistance at all. So it's, it's a really good thing. And I think it's very positive, especially in light of the fact that they truly, like, schools are really held to such a different standard than anywhere else that the kids are spending their time, but they are adapting to the time that they're with us and doing what is required of them.
So, so I've heard from some educators at the, at the park that there is some, some compliance problems and that what they do is, is they write referrals to those students, um, to, uh, to be able to have that addressed. And, you know, sometimes it, it's effective, sometimes it's not. Is there a way that we can adjust the re-referral, referral form to explicitly code for a mask problem so that we can have data on that process? Because I understand the referral form that exists today doesn't have a category for mask, it just gets entered under, uh, insubordination.
So, um, to that degree, I'm, I'm not hearing what you're hearing. And so, um, that's something we can take back to. Is that a high school situation you're talking about?
At the park, yeah.
So, uh, we can take back and talk to, to our administrators, you know?
Okay.
I don't know if that's the, that would.
Yeah, it may not be getting up to your level, but I've spoken to a number of, uh, teachers that has mentioned this.
Are they putting those referrals into, um, MyStar?
No, I think there's a, some sort of Google Form process that they use to submit them. And my ask was to have a formal category in that Google Form to be able to capture mask violations.
That, that, I don't, that wouldn't be our process to put any discipline into a, a Google Form, so. Maybe we can talk offline to talk specifically and I can follow up on that.
Okay.
Because I would believe that probably MyStar, it'd be very difficult to add to that.
No, no, I'm not asking it from MyStar. My understanding is, is it was a, a different form process, but.
We have to capture everything in our system. We don't, we don't use a Google Form for any type of student discipline.
Okay.
Sean, do you have anything?
No, just a request. Uh, could we get, could the board, uh, receive just a high-level timeline of what the move to, um, virtual would look like? You know, forty-eight hour, seventy-two hour, high-level overview, um, just to give us a, a sense of what that would look like.
And I really hope that we don't have to do that, that we.
Yeah, I hope it goes on the shelf and we never see that document. All right, absolutely, agreed. But it's similar to the, you know, plans you mentioned earlier. It's better to have those plans in place, know that they're there and, uh.
And never use them?
Absolutely.
Doug, do you have anything?
No.
Okay, Lauren, Patrick? Nupu? Looks like we're done. All right. All right, anybody have any future agenda topics?
Yeah, I have one.
Okay.
Um, I know we get a lot of, uh, presentations from academic, the academic, uh, portion of the district. And that, but I was wondering if we could get, like, any kind of, um, let's see, um, the same, the same type of, uh, um, presentations from, let's say, like, the music department? Because I, I remember, uh, uh, a few years back, we did have the, um, some information distributed to us about the different aspects of the, of the music program and that. So I was wondering if we could have, like, just the, the same thing with, like, either the music? Because, uh, you know, other than academics, we have music, sports, and some of the other clubs. I know we had, we had somebody that, that talked to us about all the clubs and stuff at one time, so. Um, and this would just, like, be an update, because we do have a few new members of here that may not know all the different activities that we have. So if we could have, like, a, um, um, this type of, uh, presentation.
Like, are you looking maybe for participating, participation in activities?
No, just what the, what, what, uh, the district has, the can, points can.
So just, just all of the opportunities for students across the district in the music programs?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, like, like Pom and Cheerleading and Color Guard and everything like that, so.
Well, so did you want? So, Color Guard and Winter Guard would, is part of the band program, but Pom is activities.
Okay, activities. Yeah, I, I, the, you know, because, yeah, without trying to figure it out for ourselves, if you're, um, if you're a board member and what we have opportunities in, in the school district, we, and it, it'd be nice to have it in a presentation mode where we could see exactly what, what we have out there. And, um, and then the same thing, like, with all the different sports, that would be, that would be interesting.
Would that be, um, um, are you looking more for presentation or maybe like statistics and board notes?
Uh, no, I, I'm talking about the programs, um,
Maybe having our APA.
when the competitions are for people to, to participate or go to. You know, because there, there's a lot of things in the, in the past years that I'd like to have gone to, but I didn't know when, when they were and what times and, and things. So, like, you know, like a presentation like football, okay, this is when we have it. This is watch, you know, um, it, how, how long it, the activity is. You can, and these are the calendar dates and, and, you know, just like that kind of a presentation.
We can take it back and see if we can come, maybe get our APAs to kind of give a high-level overview
Right.
of our activities and, and.
Yeah, you can even go to, like, get, like, um, like, the STEM program too. You can apply that, um, presentation to what, what are the different aspects of, other than just playing academics, you know, math, you know, and, and, uh, for regular, um, school activities. That's it.
All right, anybody else? All right, so our last meeting, we did not have any follow-up board questions for tonight. Um, I got the, um, wanted to see second grade achievement broken into the average, yes or no?
It's okay, we can skip that.
All right. Uh, and then enrollment in the honors international relations and Western civilizations courses?
Yes, please.
Yes, so we wanted that. Um, what world language classes, uh, count towards high school credit when they are taken in a middle school?
I think that was answered.
That was answered.
I think that was answered. If it's a high school class, it counts.
And are people firm on which is the high school class?
I can say.
I, I'm pretty sure they are.
Okay, all right.
But I am.
All right.
I don't think there's any language classes other than like a survey that you, that happens in the middle school layer that's not a, a high school class.
And then you wanted, um, information on outbreaks in sports that are happening unmasked?
Specifically any of the unmasked sports.
Un- unmasked sports.
So clarification, I received that as, as, as they happen to provide? So are you looking for a question to be answered or that's an ongoing? I heard that is an ongoing, like, when we have a situation to give the information?
Correct. Yeah, I mean, I assume that you've said that there are not any outbreaks that have happened to date, so, so anything that happens now, either outbreaks or cases actually that require quarantines in unmasked sports.
Yeah, I think it's more of an ongoing.
Okay, ongoing. Um, and then there's a request to have some kind of, an email out to the community talking about volunteering? Um, that, a timeline for moving to, uh, virtual? Should that be necessitated? Um, and then just kind of an ongoing about, um, communication to the board, um, about spread, if the guidelines change?
Yeah.
Ongoing.
Yep. And there were two others, I think, that were mentioned.
Okay.
One is, is how can we promote vaccination?
Oh, promote vaccination?
We really promote it, not just, hey, here's a clinic, but actually promote it.
Like the district I work in? Where we get emails on the regular?
Yes.
To all the families.
Yes, exactly. And then the second thing that I think that was mentioned, I think that Nupu mentioned it, that when we have security, uh, issues, that we are not doing just email, we're doing, uh, SMSs and, uh, perhaps mobile, uh, notifications when we have, uh, issues, whether it be, uh, a, a bus cancellation or a, um, or a, the school's gonna be called off today or whatever the situation is, that we're using other communication channels to do this. Because it's today, it's generally, it's an email or you get the robocall.
No, I think, so the last time I received, I, and I actually emailed Superintendent Merritt because I was pleased to see, like, three different, uh, actually maybe four, but at least three I can recall as soon as I woke up. There was a text message, which is, again, thanks for adding that, a robocall and an email. And I know, I think it's also on the app and I didn't go on the app to check that, but.
And social media and.
And social media. But I think the text message for me, because that's the first thing I look at, you know, messages pop up, so that was great.
Thank you, we got good feedback on that, thank you.
I, I only got that for the Friday, uh, situation, like, um, for, that, that they were canceling school on Friday. So at five thirty-four AM on Friday, that was the first time I've gotten a text message from the district.
I think it was the first time it was implemented.
I think that was, that was the start.
Okay.
I'm glad it worked.
I'm glad it worked.
That's the first time, is that, is that being done for other things like um like bus cancellations and snow days and everything else? Or what what's the basis that we use that for?
We have to pick and choose, right? I mean, we don't want to send a text for everything, so certainly for emergency situations, cancellations, we will always utilize it. Bus uh cancellations, we're putting those out in a variety of other mediums. We're not using texts right now.
Okay, because I think the hard part for, at least for in my family, they have do not disturb set on their phones. And so they don't get a phone call. And the text message um is something that that that's at least more visible in that kind of process. And if if your bus isn't coming today, you kind of need to know that.
For sure. So we don't use a single method for anything we do. We use multiple methods for everything. In terms of the text messaging, like we said, that's really was a start, so we'll continue to utilize it for sure. We got great feedback on it.
Okay, great.
Um, Mr. Brandy, with that, the text, I know we have a different system that we're notifying for buses too. Does that feed into that or that's a different?
It's the robocall system that uses, that does the text messages.
So that could work if that
So long as we train all the people that do the transportation robocalls. Now it's working and was successful, we have the opportunity to do that.
That's something we can talk about.
Yep, for sure.
All right, um so does anybody have anything else? All right, well, um eight more wake-ups.
Yay.
Until the break. So educators and students look for the break. They count the number of times they have to wake up early. So um again, we would like to thank Superintendent Merritt and her entire staff and all the district staff for the care they have shown to our students. Um, and enjoy the break. Hope it is restful. And you can do some things you would like to do and um just relax. Thank you so much. We will adjourn the meeting. It is nine fifty-three.
What is that? Liz, what started back up in January? This is us.